Mike stay down there? Sir, would you have a seat? All right, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and present and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as at the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. Just as a reminder, this is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me for the presidential allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
April 8, 2019, 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Mayvah Plank.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Syfax.
Here.
Jennifer Souders.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lindbergh.
Here.
Just so that we know for the public, just so that we're clear as to what's going to happen today, as normal, after the presentation happens, there'll be a moment for public questions. And those questions will be limited to three minutes, and you have one shot at that three minutes. There's also a portion, as with any planning board application, where after that come public comments. Same rule, three minutes, one time to the mic. Well, there isn't a mic, but you get the idea. Okay. There are no changes to the agenda. The agenda is remaining as it is. Please come on up.
In connection with this, Barbara, let's get you sworn in because you're going to testify as Board Secretary.
Do you swear when you get during this hearing to give the two votes in that we vote for Trump? I do. Barbara Van Wagner, Board Secretary, voting officer, Assistant President.
You have notices in connection with this master plan?
Yes, I have the legal notices, the notices were sent to Jason property owners on County Planning Board and the Planning Advocacy and also to the Asbury Park Press.
When you say Jason property owners, who are they?
I'm sorry, Jason Gennypal. Everybody that touches that.
I didn't get mine.
Neptune, Ocean Grove.
Cool.
Ocean, Allenhurst, Lock Harbor, Interlaken, Planning Advocacy, County Planning Board, and the notice in the paper. And just for the record, that's Exhibit B1. Exhibit B2 will be the actual plan.
Okay. One thing I'd like to ask you, Jack, I guess, that does, since Mike is here, does he have to recuse himself? Or is he?
Yes.
So, all right, so he has to recuse, nobody else has to recuse himself?
He can go back up and vote on this.
Okay.
Something that he could just...
Help create. Okay. I just want to be clear.
I was on the steering committee's end. Can I vote on this? Steering committee not connected with the board but connected with the creation of this.
I'm representing Complete Streets Coalition.
Mayor John Moore's over here.
Mayor as well?
Mayor's here? No, it's an election.
Yeah, so you should, because if you can't vote on something that you helped create, it's self-help. Self-help.
You could listen.
So you still have a floor.
Okay.
All right, just wanted to be clear upfront.
I suggest that you should recuse yourself. Absolutely.
Okay.
Before you start, you want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, yes, yes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last, from March 25th?
Move to approve the minutes from March 25th.
Second.
All favor.
All right. Okay.
Okay, let's go. Should we just get sworn in?
Do you swear when testimony during this proceeding will be the two, the whole two, and nothing but the minutes?
I do.
State events for the record and your affiliation with the city.
Michael Manzella, Director of Transportation for the City of Asbury Park.
Peter Kramer, Project Manager for WSP.
Mike Kublanov, Transportation Planner at WSP.
Good evening, fellow members of the board.
Good evening.
This, yes, we just... Tonight, we're talking about the plan for walking and biking for the City of Asbury Park. It is our city's pedestrian and bicycle master plan. What we're asking for tonight, after the presentation and public comments and questions, is for the board to adopt it as a sub-element of the circulation element of the master plan. This plan has been over a year in the works. In mid-2017, New Jersey Department of Transportation awarded us a local technical assistance grant in the form of consultant support to prepare this master plan. Pete and Mike Kublanov are from WSP, which is the DOT consultant firm that helped us prepare this plan. They will walk you through the entire process of what has occurred up until this point to bring this to today. Basically, this plan sets the framework for the future in terms of bicycle and pedestrian planning for the city. So every, we will be rolling this into our regular road maintenance program and road program. So every time that a road is repaved, we know already what facilities are supposed to go on it, which is a really cool thing. So after this gets adopted, it'll be shared with our city engineers, anyone, any other special project engineers working on road projects to incorporate these facilities as part of our normal maintenance. So we're excited. I think it's a really good plan that's hopefully going to bring about a bright future in terms of getting more people to feel comfortable bicycling and walking all over the city. And with that, I'll hand it over to Pete.
Thank you. So everybody, I think you all have copies of the slides, and, you know, obviously, it's just us, it's pretty informal, but whatever questions you guys have, the public cast will, you know, play it out. Sorry about...
We had a really good experience working with Mike and staff in general. I think it's really been a very positive thing. As Mike said, we have an on-call planning contract with New Jersey DOT to do bicycle and pedestrian planning, and any town can apply for those grants, and Mike secured that grant. And it's basically no cost to the town, you know, obviously, except for Mike's time. So what we're going to do is give you an overview of a little bit about the process, and then Mike Kublanov, my colleague, is going to give you some details. You'll be able to see some design concepts and some of the information that was used to develop the concepts. And he'll also show you an assessment of the conditions before and after. And as Mike Manzella said, it's not just a plan, it really is a process. Every time a road comes up for repaving or reconstruction, he can refer to this plan, and the plan will say, "On Road X, First Avenue, whatever, it's recommended to do this." And the advantage is, it drives a capital improvement program. So things are already, the concepts are already there. You certainly can decide whether or not to do these things, but we've demonstrated what the benefits are. And because it's part of an adopted plan, it's not just something that somebody cooked up yesterday on a piece of paper, you get a leg up in terms of grant funding. And New Jersey DOT does have, as part of the, you know, the gas tax increase from several years ago, one of the biggest increases was local funding. So because it's part of an adopted plan, it's been approved by the, you know, the Planning Board and adopted by the town, and it's consistent with New Jersey's Complete Streets Design Guide and Design Guidance, you should have a leg up on that sort of funding. It is very competitive, but being part of an adopted plan really helps a lot. So overall, what we did was, we did quite a lot of work upfront, talking to people. You know, in the old days, I've been doing this long enough, we used to do our measurements, look at traffic, and then we'd say, "This is what you should do." We didn't really talk to people at all. It's kind of the way DOT did things for years, and it's probably why you have roads and we have roads across the state that look that way. So now, what we do is, we spend quite a lot of time talking to people. We were down at the beach, we were at some community events, we spent some time on the West End as well, to try to make sure that we reflect the needs of everyone in town. And we try to develop a plan that improves biking and walking, mobility, safety, access to work, access to school, tourism, there are local benefits for businesses. We have some of the meetings that we had discussing with merchants and business owners, they actually recognize that a lot of their customers do walk and bike, and people also realize that everybody who's walking or biking down to the beach also doesn't need a car, so there's traffic and air quality benefits as well. So just to kind of give you an overview, these are just some of the things. We went to the National Bike Out meeting, we had our steering committee of about a dozen or so folks from across the town. We had three steering committee meetings. We were at the Blue Bishop event. We had two focus groups, one with Complete Streets Committee and some of the other bike and pedestrian advocates. We had a business focus group. And then the WikiMap is an online application that we use in all of our studies. It enables people to look at a map of town, zero in on an intersection or a corridor, place where they live, place where they want to go, and you can identify information that says, "This is a good intersection, this is a bad intersection, this is a place that, you know, I think could be improved." You can upload photos, you can upload comments. And we use that to help drive our analysis of where people live and where they want to go. So that was, you know, a big part of the process. And then what we do is a technical assessment. We look at the street conditions, we look at traffic, we look at the street widths. Is there a need for on-street parking? What are the traffic volumes? What are the posted speeds? Do we have data on speeding? What are the truck percentages? And all those things feed into whether or not a road is suitable for bicycling or not. So what we try to do is identify roads that are suitable for bicycling, or that people, roads that people have told us they would like to use. There are certain streets that run all the way across town, you know, from the West End all the way down to the beach. There are certain streets that are giving you good north and south connectivity. And when you start to piece those things together, you can connect together routes or circuits where, based on where you live, you can go almost anywhere around town safely by biking or walking. And what Mike will show you is an assessment of those conditions as is and how they should look once the final plan is improved. What we typically recommend is that, there are two ways that you can, you know, adopt the concepts. You might find some things in here that are very high priority that you want to do right away. The most cost-effective way to do these improvements is when a street comes up for paving. That's when you would fix the pavement, you would fix the sidewalks, the crosswalks, bring the traffic signals up to date. A lot of your traffic signal equipment in town here is, what is the right word?
Dated.
Dated, there you go. And it doesn't meet the standards. That's, you know, we identify things that also don't meet the standards. It's not because somebody didn't do a good job, but that 30 years ago, that was the standard. You might see, you know, a lot of traffic walk signals have push buttons, and they're very different standards today for where they should be placed compared to where they were, you know, years ago. So really, you should be able to not just move around by walking, but say if you're in a wheelchair, the push button should be accessible, it should be at a certain height, it should be close enough to the crosswalk that, you know, you can access. We've been in towns where you have to literally walk through some shrubs to push the button and come back another six feet and somehow get to the crosswalk ramp and get across the street. So these are all the kind of things that we look at. So as I said, you can do it two ways. You can prioritize some places where you think it might be beneficial to do it right now, but in a lot of cases, Mike will work closely with the engineering department, and they'll say, "These three streets are going to be repaved in the next six months," and he can go right to the plan, and the plan says, "We should do X, Y, and Z." And each of the improvements is a mix of those things. It might upgrade the traffic signals, it might, you know, fix the sidewalks, it might bring the crosswalk and the push buttons up to standard, and then maybe there's a bicycle lane improvement. There are some cases where we're also recommending conversion of some streets to one-way pairs, and we'll go through that as well. So the recommendations are a mix of those kind of things, based on the area, based on the conditions that we found, based on what we heard from people. We also look at crash data, which is what most people call accident data, and we try to identify hotspots of where a lot of crashes are occurring, and we try to find some of the underlying causes to those, and those feed into the kind of design concepts as well. So I think what I'm going to do is turn it over to Mike now. He's going to give you an overview of some of the recommendations, and then he'll show you that comparison of where you are right now in terms of bike safety and mobility, and where you think you could be once the plan is fully implemented.
Good evening. Mike Kublanov with WSP. I think Mike provided the full plan.
Yes.
To the board. So today's, my portion here is not everything. We're giving you a cross-section of the kind of recommendations we have. There's going to be more intersections, there's going to be more roads on which we propose bike lanes or other bicycle facilities. So this should give you just a good taste. If you want to see everything, please read the report. So we looked at pedestrians and we looked at bicyclists. We looked at roads that can use cycling facilities. We also looked at intersections that can use pedestrian upgrades. As Pete said, some of the pedestrian light infrastructure is dated, so it can be a little confusing across the road, or there is really no guidance in some places. So kind of quickly going into this, the first section here deals with really the pedestrian network, and we're looking at, we picked six, for the study as a whole, we had picked six intersections that kind of display a cross-section, like they represent the types of intersections you would have here. For example, we picked one on Memorial and Fourth, but really, the recommendations for this intersection can, you can go down the line on Memorial, and every intersection has similar issues that could be addressed in the same way. So for that reason, we picked six. We actually initially picked, I believe, five, but the last meeting we had here, we had provided you guys the plans, and then we actually received a bunch of comments. So we made some final edits to the report. So out of the six, I'll show you just three. This is the kind of stuff you can expect to see in the report. We show you the existing aerial, so this is as Memorial at Fourth is today. You can see, I'm sure everyone's experienced it, for pedestrian, I guess I can't do the laser here, for, you know, crossing Memorial, it can get a little confusing, your sidewalk ends pretty early, and then you kind of have to figure out, "Well, where do I walk? Is it safe? Is the train going to, you know, is the gate going to come down on me?" And all sorts of things. And for vehicles, you have a stop bar that's way off to the right, which becomes confusing to a lot of people, I think especially at the intersections without signals, we noticed. And, you know, I've been here several times now, and every time I'm a little confused, that's exactly what's happening at that intersection. So probably the most that we heard was about intersections along Memorial being problematic. So here's kind of a sketch that we did. This shows you kind of conglomerates all the recommendations we have for this intersection as well as the corridors. So you can see right off the bat, the green lines, those are the proposed bike lanes that we have. One of the beauties of Asbury Park is that many, many roads here are actually really wide. You know, when we do these plans in other towns, if I want to say, "Hey, you should have bike lanes on this road," that usually entails removing parking of some sort, because typically you don't have enough space. And Asbury Park, we found that a great deal of roads here, you need nothing but paint, and you now have bike lanes, the parking remains, the two lanes remain, and everything goes on, and now you just have facilities for cyclists. It's a very, I don't want to say cheap, but a very, very doable thing. So here we have bicycle lanes recommended for Fourth Ave, similar to, I believe, Sunset?
Yeah, Fourth was done, actually.
I'm sorry?
Fourth was done already.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been here so long that, as we're going along, you guys are installing more and more of this stuff. And then really delineating the pedestrian realm, I can't really show you here, but if you can see the curb extensions, the pedestrian islands, they allow, if you're a pedestrian, you have less time being in the roadway, less risk of being run over by vehicles, basically. Defining the curb extents, you can see kind of on the southeast side there, you have a line. We noticed that a lot of the driveways get sort of lost between the road and the driveway. Where is the driveway? Where does it stop? Where does it start? And it gets a little confusing and chaotic in those places. So those are the main recommendations here. And if you go, if you do this up and down the line along Memorial, we think you'll get pretty good results. We also saw, you guys do have some of those stopper pedestrians within the crosswalk signs around the city, right in the center. Those are really effective, because drivers are going to slow down when they come to those. When you have an obstacle like that in the middle of the road, you're not, most people are going to, you know, I'm not saying everybody, but a lot of people will slow down for those kind of signs. Another one, prospected bangs. Here's the existing, here's the recommended. You can see the westbound bangs is a little offset from the receiving lane on the other side. So it's a little bit of an awkward kind of arc. So we recommended putting in some curb extensions here. This will make pedestrians more visible to drivers, especially at this angular intersection. You can see the kind of curvature of bangs coming up to the intersection. This will allow, it's greater visibility, and it's a little more coherent in terms of continuing to the west. Not every road is wide enough for bike lanes, and nor should there be bike lanes on every single road that you can have them on. I mean, it's really up to the town to decide, "Hey, you know, we have the space, we have five roads that can use bike lanes. Which ones are the most important?" You can do, you can really see who's cycling the most on these roads and follow the demand. You know, sometimes you don't have the width. The western side of town has much narrower roadways by and large compared to those huge roads we have, the numbered roads in the east. So we like to recommend shared lane markings. Actually, we don't like to. I think it's typically a last resort for cycling facilities because there's insufficient space. But these still give drivers an understanding that cyclists can be here, like they're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, they're supposed to ride here with me. If you make these highly visible, keep them out of the way of parking, and people can see them as they're going along, they are effective. And then this, I believe this is signalized.
Yes.
Right? So we were just saying, looking at, maybe add some pedestrian pet heads, basically. So there's no pedestrian light component to this intersection, it's just a little signal hanging up in the middle. So investigate, putting in some pedestrian lights in there. And then you can see Prospect, Prospect is another one of those narrow roads, it does kind of fluctuate between the blocks, but we recommended, it's called advisory bike lanes, it's a newer item on the, in the toolkit, basically to retain the parking, to retain two lanes of travel, and to be able to have dedicated bike space. You can actually have a shared space. So if cyclists are not here, the drivers can use all this, I don't know if you can see, but down here at the bottom, the drivers can use the full lane, irregardless of those dash lanes. But when cyclists are present, that's their space, and drivers need to go around. So this has been tested in several cities, and it's been relatively effective. I think this was like our experimental item for Asbury Park. We looked at Prospect, it's a pretty good connection between the east and the west, it kind of, one of the only diagonal roadways, so it really can move people from one side of town to the other with relatively low volumes. So that's prospected bangs. I'm going to go a little quicker here. Grand at Fourth, currently, Grand has bike lanes, north and south. I think we talked with Mike, potentially looking at warrants for a signal here in the future, if it's warranted. Of course, putting in ped lights as well. A lot of similar items from the other, from Memorial at Fourth, curb extensions, narrowing the crossing for pedestrians. These curb extensions also slow down turning vehicles, so they're not flying at you as you cross the street. That's one of their main purposes. So, and then all around, we like to do high-visibility crosswalks. You've probably seen four, five, six different designs for crosswalks. Typically, the most visible ones are the ones you see here. They, they're wider, the paint is not, it's perpendicular to you as you're coming at the intersection instead of parallel.
Normally, if you look at the roadway, so this pad is actually about the width of the normal stripe. So if you imagine 200 feet away, seeing a white line that's faded, it really doesn't show up very well. In this case, the lines are about foot wide, and they're about 10 feet long, so they really jump out at you. And what we noticed also is when the light, because they're somewhat reflective, when it's early morning or at dusk, what you actually see is the silhouette of a person walking through the crosswalk. So it really does, does really greatly, you need some visibility. So that's, and a lot of times, they're done with retro-reflective plastic material that's bonded to the roadway, and it lasts longer than paint as well.
So these are the three, like I said, we have six in the report. You'll see similar recommendations for the other three. So moving on to the proposed bicycle network, kind of the core of the study, so we like to use a metric, a metric called the bicycle level of traffic, level of stress, it's called. And what that really means is, there's four types of riders. There's, you know, the people who will ride anywhere, anytime, the enthusiasts. You have people who are comfortable riding in most places, you have people who are curious but a little wary, and then you have people who don't ride at all. Like, there is nothing we can do to make them ride. So between those four people, or those four groups of people, we measure the stress, and it's in, it's on the roadways, and it's based on many, many factors. It's based on travel speeds on the road, it's based on the volumes of the road. You know, just think of what would scare you from riding on a road. Volumes, speeds, crossing really busy intersections. So even if the road you're on is pretty attractive, you might have to cross a really big road, and that's going to, that's going to create a boundary. So what you see here, if you look right in this, like in the middle, you see the level of stress three and four roadways. So this is existing as we, as we saw when we came in. You can see Memorial and Main. Main is a level of stress four, Memorial's a three. So really, these two create a barrier between the west and the east. If I want to ride my bike from one to the other, I pretty much have to contend with the craziness of those two roads. So when we target bike improvements, it's not like, "Hey, bike lane on every road will fix the problem." It's, "Let's figure out a way to break that barrier and get a couple strategic ways of riding your bike from one side to the other," and you get a lot of bang for your buck in that case. Now, the city and DOT is already doing a lot with the 71 road diet. That has the bike lanes, you know, all sorts of improvements. That's going to significantly drop this level of stress for cyclists. Memorial, as it stands today, is still a barrier. That's why we have a lot of emphasis on Memorial, the intersections and the corridor. So very quickly, this is the overall proposed bike network. You'll see all these components in the report. I'll go through just a couple of the roadways. Basically, there's different types of bicycle facilities. There's typical bike lanes that you see most often, there's buffered bike lanes, there's bicycle boulevards, which are basically low-volume roadways in which you, you put elements on them that slow traffic down and make it comfortable for the cyclist. Different signs, different treatments to the pavement, like speed tables, things like that. Shared-use path, which is basically off the road completely. It's a path that you have going somewhere, and bicyclists and pedestrians are all on that. And then shared lane markings, as we saw, which is basically just sharing the road with drivers. So throughout town, we propose many, many bike lanes, particularly, you could see east and west, especially in the northern side, because all those roadways are very wide, and it takes very little, actually, to make this happen. In fact, I think this entire, what you see in front of you takes zero parking away from anyone. So there's zero parking removed from town. I know that's a contentious issue, obviously. So we didn't want to touch that, and we didn't have to, because the town can support these facilities without any harm, basically. We looked at, and I know, I think this was something that was the case many, many years ago, one of the recommendations we made was to convert Ocean Ave one-way north. We had initially proposed a one-way pair with Kingsley, that people did not like the Kingsley idea, so we reverted out of that. But basically, if you convert Ocean Ave north one-way, you've opened up some pavement, and on that, you can put some bike facilities, and you're going to have a lot of cyclists on that, on that road. Because the boardwalk is not necessarily always friendly to cyclists. I mean, there's restrictive hours, it's got huge crowds, it's not necessarily superconducive to heavy cycling. So that's kind of the reason behind that. I'll go through these really quickly. We did a bunch of these cross-sections. I'll show you just a few. This will give you a really good idea of what we, what we see and what we would like to see. Hopefully, it's graphically understandable. So Ocean Ave today, looking north, you have your angled parking, you have two travel lanes, you have parking, opposing parking. These are the types of things we looked at. So you see, remove the southbound, it becomes just northbound. You have protected bike lanes. You can see the little three-foot buffer there. That's a huge deal for a lot of cyclists who aren't enthusiasts. It gives them a level of protection. A lot of people cycle on these types of roads when you're separated from traffic. The parking stays on both sides, and it's just the northbound. Basically, people can loop right around and come right back, but this gives you a bunch of space for cycling.
Can I add another comment on this?
Sure.
So I think one of the other really big benefits of this proposed cross-section is, with reverse-angle parking on the eastbound side, what happens is, especially when people are going to the beach, all the doors and the trunk now open to the sidewalk, right? So if I'm unloading my kids, you know, beach equipment, whatever, you unload it towards the sidewalk instead of right now, which you're unloading in the street. And you've got a three-foot buffer now between the bikes and the cars, so there's no, you know, interaction between cyclists and people unloading their car. So I think it would really, not only calm the street, because now you only have the one travel lane as well, but I think it provides a really convenient way for people to get to the beach, too.
And the benefit is that when you leave, you're not backing, you're never backing into the roadway at all. It seems sort of counter to, because we're not used to doing it this way, but they've had good success. It's been tried in a couple of shore communities in Philadelphia and other places. But the, the big problem with angled parking is that you back blindly out into a travel lane. You really can't always see, especially if there's a big vehicle parked next to you. Mike's point is that you're now backing into the spot, so you're not really exposing your kids to the traffic. And when you leave, you just look over your left and you pull right out into the roadway. So it really is, has been shown to be very beneficial.
Can I ask a quick technical question about that?
Yeah.
I've never seen the reverse angle where it's adjacent to a bike lane. So in terms of that buffer, what are the, what are the devices or mechanisms you would put in place there to make that work?
You could do it a lot of ways. You could do planters. You could do curb blocks. You could do plastic bollards. If drainage is an issue, you would want to have some way so that the water can flow through. But some kind of solid thing that your wheels would, you know, end up against would probably be beneficial. What we could do, we have a template that shows the dimensions, but we'll, we'll find you some information about how to, how to handle that piece. Because, yeah, you do back up and you don't really know always where to stop unless your wheel is hitting something, so we can get there for you.
Is there, is there any issue with license plate recognition doing that? With the new systems that we have in place with the license plate recognition?
It, it could present a slight issue because some states don't have the front plate. Pennsylvania doesn't. New York does. Delaware does, I believe. So it'd be the kind of thing where maybe on Ocean Ave, they would have to get out and look at the plate.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a really good question.
How high is the buffer between the cars and the bicycle lanes?
Well, the, the pavement is flush and there, like I said, there are different ways to do it. You could do it as a curb. You could do it as wheel blocks. You could do it with plastic bollards. You could do it with planters. So it would, and it would be designed so that water would flow through. But what we'll do is we'll get some information so that you guys will be able to evaluate that, based on your, this, the license plate recognition is a really good question. Well, that's why I forgot that.
I'm just thinking in terms of people getting out of cars and what are they gonna do? They're gonna walk across the bike lane so that they have to go down to the road to an entrance?
Oh, well, you have a three-foot buffer, so even when you get to the back of your car, I can, the bike will be three, at least three feet from me. So you're not gonna walk directly into the bike lane. You've got plenty of time to look both ways. So that part, I don't think is, is an issue.
But yeah, I mean, if, if you get out of the car and you need to, you do need to cross the bike lane to get onto the, onto the curb, unless you walk down to the curb ramp, the crosswalk.
I'm thinking families with kids.
Sure.
Chairs and all the stuff that you're bringing. What are you gonna do? How are you gonna get from the car to the boardwalk?
Right.
Still much better than dumping all that stuff out onto the street. So I think it is, you know, you would, you will have to pay attention to the bike lane, but it's a bike lane as opposed to traffic.
And I would argue that this is still better than what we have now, which is, you, you have that really wide parking area where bikes kind of belong, sort of, now on Ocean Ave. It's like kind of a no man's zone. So you've got bikes coming through, your car doors are open this way, plus there's traffic. I would, I would argue that it's much more chaotic now than it would be in this situation because at least everyone's kind of in their place and you know what to expect as you're getting out of your car and onto the sidewalk.
Well, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, yeah. No doubt.
That's a good question.
I, I would agree with you, but, and this is gonna happen this summer. So you know, you guys don't know, unless you came back here in the summertime.
Yeah.
How many people cross the street? So, and I have no problem saying, hey, John, we're gonna put up like, once you get to the three-foot buffer, watch out for bicycles, just because that's gonna be needed. Because if people think, hey, it's a car, I'm home free, I'm on my knees, and then they get blocked by a bicycle.
Sure.
So.
Okay. I mean, it, it would be sort of similar to crossing the boardwalk, but obviously.
It's not even close to disabilities.
Now, and again, this is, this is meant to be kind of a conceptual framework.
No, no, I, I like that.
Yeah.
I'm back in, but we just have to be, probably get the first year or so.
What, what I.
And then we'll realize, okay, you're, you cross the street.
Sure.
But you're not home free yet.
What I was gonna suggest, and, and this is, this could also be done, too, is instead of that being a three-foot buffer, that could be a six-foot buffer. You could take away at least a foot from the parking lane, two feet from the travel lane, then you build a sidewalk.
If it's three foot or six foot or 50 foot, you still need to worry.
Oh, no doubt.
So I have to keep it to the three foot and just a sign saying, watch out for bicycles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, got two more examples and then wrapping it up. Kingsley, we have, you know, a very heavy north-south road. It's really the first major roadway you encounter as you move west from the beach beyond Ocean Ave. So Kingsley also supports transit, so big buses come down. We didn't want to take, currently, you know, two 17-foot travel lanes, which by all accounts are very wide travel lanes. Two parking lanes. We looked at, again, nothing's removed. You have two 11-foot travel lanes, which are standard travel lanes. You retain your parking and you now have six, six-foot bike lanes. So this would kind of help reinforce and support that north-south beachside bike travel.
And, and we talked a lot in the steering committee about restoring the circuit. Basically, making Kingsley one-way south and Ocean one-way north. There's a couple of challenges to that, one of which is, Ocean doesn't go all the way through anymore to D8 Drive. So even if you made Kingsley one-way south, you couldn't north of Seventh Ave because the folks who were going north on Ocean wouldn't be able to go north anymore. So it kind of defeats the purpose anyway. And I think Kingsley's already had a lot of work put into it in terms of curb extensions and there would be a lot of additional maneuvering that, that folks would have to do if it was just one-way southbound. It's not to say that we can't in the future think about making the circuit again, but I think on Ocean at least, there's, there's a, a much lower volume of southbound traffic. Most people are coming in, traveling east and going north on Ocean. So I think losing the southbound lane there wouldn't really impact traffic much at all and would, would have the added benefit of an awesome bike facility right against the boardwalk, so.
You're still gonna have the circuit. I mean, the semblance of the circuit.
Yeah.
You still get to change it.
Mike, if you do, if you could propose in one way on Ocean, could you do one-way bike lane on Ocean, so it'd be less for people to have to look at? You're crossing that bike lane, you're kind of having to look both ways.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we could think about. I think, I think from the perspective of the steering committee and this plan, we wanted to make bicycling much more convenient, in, especially in the, in the beachfront area. And Kingsley is, you know, the main north-south, obviously in both directions. But to not have that southbound travel lane along the ocean, especially when we're not gonna allow bikes on the boardwalk, I think would be a mistake.
Can you get people riding south?
I, I agree with everyone else's points and questions that we need to really think about how we alert pedestrians that there's two-way traffic. But I think that if we, the other thing is, if we create a facility like this, I don't, I don't foresee that we would just attract kind of the, I hate to stereotype them, but lycra-wearing, super enthusiast bicyclists. I, I think there's gonna be a lot of congestion. And when there's a lot of congestion, especially in bike lanes, everyone kind of slows down. So I, I, I think that will help to facilitate all those interactions between people, you know, walking pedestrians and cyclists. And it's still, I think, better than what we have now, which is cars mixing with cyclists and pedestrian.
And we have, you can see, we separated the bike lanes here. When you do a two-way like this, you kind of, you save yourself a little bit of space because the buffer happens once.
Right.
So if we put one of these lanes on the other side, you don't, you typically don't want to do, a foot and a half is the bare minimum, three feet is preferred. So you're, basically, we're saying we're gonna double that three-foot buffer, obviously. So in this case, where space is pretty tight, along with every other reason we just heard, I think that's another reason. I mean, you'd, you'd have to lose some space from either parking, travel lane, parking lane, whatever. So this way, we're maximizing the space we have.
Maybe crosswalks at the entries to the boardwalk?
Yeah, no, they would, the crosswalks would still be there. The bike lanes would not, would not over supersede those crosswalks. Those crosswalks remain.
No, I mean, from, from the buffer across the bike lanes into the entry to the boardwalk, you know, how they have been separate entries to the boardwalk?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, the crosswalks would be, would still be there, yeah.
Isn't that lights, bikes, right?
Signals now.
Now signals and lights.
Yeah.
The final example I have up here is coveted Memorial. We have the existing conditions to, kind of a unique situation. Two 16-foot lanes, eight-and-a-half foot parking, and a seven-and-a-half foot shoulder. It's, we kind of learned what it is typically used for, as kind of a waiting lane for the, when the train comes by. But nevertheless, we wanted to look, so north of Monroe and south of Monroe takes on a bit of a different shape, a different appearance. Here it is, north of Monroe, using that shoulder. And again, this would be, this is an extra assessment you should probably make. It's, what kind of effect will it have on that, that informal waiting space? I mean, technically speaking, it shouldn't be used.
Right.
But if it is and it's gonna, you know, present itself to be a, a very serious problem.
Right. And I, I think, north of Monroe, the good thing is, you know, the, the train gates stay down longer south of Monroe because the station's at Bangs, right? Between Bangs and, and Springwood. So you have a lot of situations where people are just kind of hanging out, waiting to make that right turn. North of Monroe, and especially the further north you get, usually the trains are moving faster, so the gates are only down for about a minute at a time. So it shouldn't be a traffic issue where people are looking to make the right and, and can't because the gates are down. You see it today, I mean, most people kind of just, if, if the train's coming, they kind of just keep going to the next cross street to make the right where the gates are up, so. Good, sorry.
In this case, remember, we talked about the level of stress? So Memorial was a three. This is a slight, you can see it's only a foot and a half buffers, but these have the vertical separation. So it doesn't mean the car can't fly through that and cause damage, but it does mean psychologically and really for the driver, the driver's gonna be on the lookout. I mean, if he or she is seeing vertical bollards, they're not gonna easily steer into that lane. So what this does is it creates a much safer, at least perceptually safer, environment for the cyclists. And really, using this technique, we're able to drop the level of stress to a one by the methodology of the level of stress analysis. So again, we keep two 12-foot travel lanes, which are standard, actually a little bigger, two six-foot bike lanes, a foot and a half buffer, and you retain the parking lane. So this is north of Monroe. South of Monroe, you have the new center turn lane. You have a six, six-foot shoulder on either side, which basically are bike lanes. And then you have two 11-foot travel lanes. And for this, once again, just utilizing the space you have, you can take a foot from the center turn lane and using those two shoulders, create buffered bike lanes. And again, you're dropping your level of stress from a three to a one in this case. And, you know, with, if you do this to Memorial in combination with, with what's happening to 71 Main Street, you've basically eliminated that barrier. Assuming all the crossings are done well, cyclists should have a much easier time crossing the, the two roadways. The other interesting thing we noticed is, this cross-section, two 16-foot travel lanes, eight-foot parking in either direction, is virtually identical on all of those roads when we did our analysis. I mean, give or take inches, but basically, that's what each one of them looks like. And if you see a pattern here, we can use the space we have. And again, we can introduce bicycle lanes, retain all of the parking, have two 10-foot travel lanes. I mean, these aren't fast roadways. And we've heard many, many complaints about fourth, fifth, especially out to the west, people flying around the, you know, the, the curves there, going way faster than they should be. This is one way to slow that down while giving cyclists a place, a place to cycle. So you, you know, you don't have to do it on each road, but know that you can on any of these. And then, you know, several other roadways are good candidates for cycling. I think they do, they connect important things. They connect schools, they're adjacent to them, or they fill in the network. They really help cyclists get from one side of town to the other, but they don't have necessarily the width for those green, you know, bicycle lanes. So we look at, look to bicycle boulevards, as mentioned before. You put signs up, you know, little distance markers for cyclists. You can put those charros that we talked about, shared lane markings in the road. Oftentimes, these roads don't even have a center line. They're not necessarily very heavily trafficked. They have two lanes, but you can see kind of cars meandering when there's not enough space. It's kind of an informal roadway. It's a two-way, but beyond that, nobody really knows what to do until they're on it, until they're encountering other drivers. So these are actually pretty good candidates for cycling facilities. Because they're slow and many, many cyclists that you, you would ask would be much more comfortable on this road than even with more standard facilities on much busier roads, which is why you should never overlook these roadways. Don't go out there and say, hey, it's too narrow, forget about it. There's things you can do to make this very desirable to everyday cyclists. And again, revisiting the, you know, the level of stress network that we saw before. Here, you can see in the green, these are changes. So based on what we're recommending, the, the green highlights, those are roadways that go from a three or a four down to a two or a one in terms of level of stress. And you can see in the center, you're basically, you know, even with the recommendations, Main Street's a very busy roadway. It's gonna be a two. I mean, you cannot, it's very difficult to make something like that a one. But you can see the vast improvement, especially throughout, right through the spine of the city, kind of opening up those avenues for cyclists. And thank you, and this is some of the stuff. Again, please read the report. We'd be happy to, you know, if you want to pass along comments to Mike, Pete and I would love to answer anything.
Sure.
Yes.
Yep.
I believe the way the chair first.
Yeah, yeah. No, we start with the questions. Any questions you'd like to make?
If you are instrumental in this report, then we would just.
I have about a handful of questions that are not all related, so I'm trying, I'm trying to organize.
Sure.
And first of all, I think this is so in-depth and comprehensive and you can tell how much work and thought went into it, so appreciate that from all of you. So my first question is about the bike, and also you've answered about half my questions already, so that's good. So the bike map on page 51 of the full report, it just shows the proposed network. This might be just a quick question, but is the reason that Springwood and Bangs stayed just the shared lane because of the, what, or what is the reason that Springwood, which connects east to west, and Bangs stayed with the shared as opposed to more?
I believe.
It's the width.
Yeah, it's, it's the width. The width of the roadway, yeah. Springwood was one of the only roads really early on where I did recommend, because this was before the developments came in. I was like, hey, what if we did take that parking on one side? Because at that time, there's almost nobody parking on it. And Mike informed me, hey, when this thing's built, that's not gonna fly. So that was initially, I want to say, a better bicycle facility proposed, but it went back.
Yeah, because, because just from looking at the way that you access east to west, or west to east, either way, it's still that southwest quadrant that is the, you still have to kind of work to get there on a nice bike. And if it's just infrastructure, it's the way it is. I mean, I know that the neighborhood's also the way the blocks are configured. There aren't as many options because they're cut off and this type of thing. So that answers one. Now, over to the pedestrian, let's see, pedestrian concept map, so page 97, I think, of the full report. Oh, this is a quick one. So I saw, and part of what I was looking at was the, for, for both these questions, was the input from the Blue Bishop and some of the maps that were marked up. I'm just kind of trying to correlate what was on those community input into what the final result was. I know there's a lot of stuffs in between. And then, so the, that intersection of Springwood and Atkins, I saw that noted as should be a priorities intersection at a few places, but then it's not. Is that just because you had to pick?
That's actually because we've already improved it. So we just installed, as of the end of last summer, basically, a new, a new traffic signal at Springwood and Atkins. Fully compliant.[1739.71] Fully compliant, uh, I've actually gotten a lot of compliments, that people love that it talks to them. Because we, you know, as part of the ADA design, what's included now also is for those hard of hearing, or, I'm sorry, hard of sight, to have, uh, audible, um, feedback in terms of cross Springwood now, you know, that kinda thing. So, that, that intersection's been fully upgraded and functions much better.
So this was prior, this map is just earlier?
Yeah, it was, it was during the work in progress.
Right, right, I know there's a lot of, a few things that have been, a lot of things have been done already.
Right, as Mike noted, we'd down here quite a lot, and every time we came, we would see something that was changed. We'd have to update that. So, it actually, we were kinda thinking in the same way, actually, a lot of times, and several times Mike consulted with us, is, you know, is this the way to do this, sort of thing? So it was actually very collaborative.
Yeah, it's a good thing that these things are happening. And the other two are more general questions, so one, I, I saw it noted a few times about priority, give priority where you can, where there's the school neighborhoods, and it seems like an obvious thing, um, but the, and I know that the end of Third and Ridge, you've already done work already, and, um, but that also, you know, Third, obviously, is, is also a thoroughfare all the way through town, and it does get crazy speeding. So I would just say that, I mean, anything that goes all the way across town is as much of a thoroughfare as anything else. And just from, um, like, observation over the years and thinking about it, the, I'm sure you all talked about this a million times, but the fact that you have out-of-town people, and then you have how people get around to work, or just on their daily life in town, which are obviously very different things, so, uh, just, just an example, like, that I've witnessed a lot on Third, that when, um, people are coming in for happy hour and things, so they're, they're just flying in Third, and Bradley School's letting out their aftercare, and it's not, it's, it's just because, if you're just coming into town, you wouldn't necessarily know that's a school zone, you might see a little sign. But it's a real, there's a few places in town where there's those conflicts, where, um, just as much as we can help make the public that doesn't know the city aware that, you know, it's like any urban area, but I feel like there's a few places in town where it's just considered a thoroughfare, and we're coming in, and, um, like, the daily lives of people are really, it's pretty dangerous. And I feel like this report has, or this plan has addressed a lot of that, it's just then how do we implement it? So when I saw that, you know, this is a prototype, or this is, um, an example of what we could do at all these other places, I was just hoping that, like, as the funding comes along, that we can do those.
Yeah, so, to that end, um, well, I think your comment is totally right, uh, of all the streets in the city, Third and Fourth are probably the, the ones we hear the most about in terms of speeding. And it's really just the nature of how the street grid was set up. I mean, Third and Fourth are the only through streets between Asbury and Sunset, and by the way, they don't have any signals, so people tend to take them, 'cause they're faster to, to get to the waterfront, to get to Main Street, to get...
Third, Third has a signal.
It does, you're right, I apologize, Third has one signal, fine. But, um, I, to that end, I think that there's a, there's a, a large section of this report that talks about traffic calming, and talks about different ways to do that. And from the city's perspective, we've already applied for safe routes to school funding to be used on Third and Fourth for traffic calming measures, including but not limited to many roundabouts, immediate island, uh, uh, speed variable, speed feedback signs, things like that. I think that we do have to do something about putting more of an emphasis on slowing speeds on Third and Fourth. Because, mostly because of the school.
I know, I can see that, and I think, and this is, this might seem like an obscure thing to say, but the, again, living in like a semi-urban area versus, we have a lot of people that come from more suburban areas, so even just simple things, like, most of us back out of our driveways, like, very simple things, our roadways are very different than two towns over.
Right.
So I don't know how you address that, other than having, like, these things, like, traffic calming, um, because sometimes I just feel like, you know, especially on certain times of the year, that there's people that are just not aware that this is a very different way to travel than a few towns over.
Right, and actually, we were just in Bradley Beach, and I noticed several streets that I saw people biking on, and I started stepping off the width, and, uh, you guys have a lot more pavement to work here with, so. You mentioned specifically Third and Fourth, so on the, the handout, um, the existing condition is a 16-foot travel lane in each direction. Sixteen is extremely wide, you know, interstate standard is about 12 feet, um, and we're going down to 10-foot travel lanes. Um, and you're also introducing the bike lane and all that striping, so it introduces a lot more for the motorists to see, and it also narrows down his usable roadway, so you really have to pay attention. Um, there's data that shows going from 12-foot width to 11-foot width knocks about a, a mile or two off of people's speeds. So you should get some, you know, decent benefit from, you know, taking away five or six feet from the travel lane. And the presence of, um, the cyclists, and just the striping from that should give you some benefit. And, um, if Mike was able to get some of those intersections improved with the really high visibility, uh, striping, you know, some of those things could really add up to some benefit. But I, you know, another part that's in the plan that we didn't talk about is sort of education enforcement. People need to know what to do with these things, um, how to behave when they see a shallow, what to do in a bike lane, or how to use, um, you know, back-end angle parking. Uh, so maybe doing something with a local newspaper, or getting some flyers, we can get you some educational materials. Uh, there's also the TMA, who's, is it?
Easy Ride.
Easy Ride is your TMA, and they'll have all sorts of things, so you can give out, um, to hotels and B&amp;Bs and people that rent out rooms, free brochures that they can hand to people, uh, you know, about bike share, and it's just telling them where the bars are, you can hand them information about, you know, this is the law for a crosswalk, that sort of thing. So, uh, we find, you know, even the best design, if people don't know what to do, they don't do it. So we definitely need to pair good design with, uh, you know, better behavior. And, um, so there's a lot of educational materials that we can, you know, help to provide to Mike to distribute around town.
Absolutely, and, uh, sorry, two last quick things, and that, that was my one, was that I saw that section on education, which I think is so important, whatever. We have great communication network here, but just to get it out there in town too, and out town. Um, and then the last piece is just reiterating again that, that southwest quadrant, when, um, I know a lot of the biking that exists now, that, that's recorded here as by the, considered by the beach or coming into town, but then also people ride their bikes to get from place to place within just neighborhood, so there's still a lot of biking that goes on all over the place. Um, so it's sometimes, just to be, you know, whatever we can do to make it safer when you're trying to get from point A to B within a neighborhood. You know, and we have to do the analysis, one, these are the key points that you're trying to get, but sometimes people are just trying to get to their friend's house, or, yes, so it's just within the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, we, we did, we tried to, to put as much as we can in terms of, of bike facilities in the southwest area. It's, uh, just the, the roadway net- network and the, and the width of the streets, it's, it tends to be difficult to, to really build it out, but, you know, we did our best to put it on as many of the streets as possible, to get, to make those neighborhood connections.
And, you know, uh, even Bangs, it's, it's one of the long-distance streets you could take in to come from other towns, and it's gonna take you right in, so. Um, I've, I've noticed that myself, um, so you can try initially the, uh, shared lane markings, and maybe Mike can target a couple intersections. Especially, uh, you, what you wanna do is intercept people at the perimeter. You know, they're coming from, if the road looks the same when you're at Garden State Parkway to what it does, you know, and you're in town, you're not gonna slow down. So, uh, uh, you know, enhanced crossing that has bulb-outs, or maybe even some speed enforcement signs that, you know, tell people, give people coming into town a little fe- feedback, that this is a different kind of area, you need, you need to behave differently. Um, that, that might be something to do as well. You know, that whole perimeter, uh, along the west and northern edge, well, mostly along the west, really, when you're coming from, uh, regional highways from out of town. I think that, that could really be beneficial, maybe at Ridge, or DeWitt, or something, have some, some, you know, one or two intersections with some really enhanced improvements. That might be a, a really good thing to do. You know, you can pair, um, bulb-outs with high-visibility crosswalks, and improved striping, and a mid-block, um, this is your speed type of sign. A lot of those run on solar now, as well. Um, so that, that, you know, a, a number of different things, uh, to really give people the idea that, "I'm not in the suburbs, I'm not on the highway anymore, I'm in a, I'm, really, this is a, a city, a small city, a lot of people walking around town, and that is the, definitely the more vulnerable populations in that part of town." So, uh, we try to create a plan that was for everyone, but, um, the grid in that area, you know, just take a quick look at the map, it's, it's obvious. For whatever reason, you know, uh, if you went back far enough, you might see that some of those streets went through, and maybe, uh, streets were vacated to make room for a large building, or something like that, or a school, sometimes that happens, so. But I would tar- I would target a couple of those places, and, uh, the report has the crash map as well, so that would give you that, you know, where some of the hotspots were to, to use that as, as a prioritization.
Okay, John, thank you.
Okay, and I, I agree with Jen, and I think the entire board, uh, excellent job. I appreciate the hard work, I appreciate the public helping, and I am very much for this. So any question I ask, I'm just playing devil's advocate and saying, like, mm, I'm for this, but help me through this. So, give me the definition of a bus, somebody. Is, is a transit bus the same as a school bus?
Yeah, typically, uh, I, you know, I guess it's considered to be one vehicle, but, um, uh, you know, if you were gonna do, want a bulb-out, for example, you would have to identify which vehicles were...
No, just because some of the streets, uh, get to that, like, some of the streets you say make 10 feet, but you say it should never be less than 11 feet for a bus, and some of these streets, we have school buses going up and down, so.
We would, that would be something that you'd need to do and look at the bus routes, that, it's not something, but that, that is a good question. I, I, before any street was upgraded, I certainly would, you know, make that, that check.
At least from the standpoint of NJ Transit buses, 'cause we have the routes going in.
Places we have, but not school buses.
I don't know if they've actually even changed it recently, but...
Hey, Michael, correct me, do we have, uh, bus routes on Ocean Avenue?
Yes, there is one bus, yeah, that goes north on Ocean.
Right, so we made that, and they're, they're going, they're on the...
It, it already only goes north on Ocean, and then, and then turns.
Right, so if you made it one-way south, what happens there?
No, Ocean would be one-way north.
One-way north, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So wouldn't affect it, whatever.
And to your point about the buses, I think, you know, in the, in the typical cross-section that they showed, it was 10-foot lanes with 6-foot bike lanes. There's absolutely no problem making it an 11-foot lane with a 5-foot bike lane, 5-foot is more than enough. I mean, you'd like 6, but 5-foot's a bit...
I'm gonna go through the report, sure, when I get to page that I...
Yeah, no, that's a good question, 'cause, uh, we always know that the transit buses, but, um, you know, a lot of towns don't have a school bus map, so that's something we should incorporate to our work.
You've answered that. Page twenty-four. Pedestrian signals have 44, just 11 of 44 signalized. Pedestrian signals, headlights.
Yeah.
Okay, but that number's definitely gonna increase when Main Street's...
Oh, yeah.
So that 11 is gonna be like 28 now.
Yeah, Main Street has 16 intersections that will all have signal heads now.
That inventory was done right, almost right at the beginning, so...
Oh, I know that.
It may have actually changed already.
Every time you come down, something changed it, as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Again...
That new standard requires that you upgrade the, the pedestrian head, so that, that would be done.
Priority, uh, I'm sorry, page thirty-five, priority intersections, which I do not disagree with you, and you have Bangs and Prospect. And then I'm gonna find a page later on where you say Prospect is not a busy street, and that I disagree with you, that Prospect is a busy street. I'll get there.
Yeah, that, that's more of a geomet- well, there's a school right nearby, isn't there?
Yeah.
That's more of a geometric, yeah, we'll look at the language. The priority intersections were chosen...
Okay.
...as templates, and, uh, but if it says it's not busy, then, you know, that's obviously something...
It's a busy street, Prospect, or else we wouldn't have a traffic light there, as Prospect in Asbury, because we couldn't get across it. Page forty-two, the speed limit, so adjust the speed limit on all bicycle boulevards to 20 miles per hour. Urban Monmouth County reduces the speed limit, and I guess work with the state to reduce the speed limit. Put the ordinance up, and you got my vote tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean...
A quote on that.
Yeah, I mean, I totally, totally agree with you.
Some, um, we're doing some work in Somerset County, they have a, a little brochure and a procedure for changing a speed limit. I have, honestly, I don't know, uh, you know, how, uh, flexible Monmouth County is, but it's a good idea of...
But as far as our city streets, you can reduce 25 to 20, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
With no problem?
That's one of the, actually, I forgot to say, for the bike boulevards, that's one of, one of the best things you can do, the 20 mile an hour.
I don't, I don't know where in the report, but there's that graphic that, uh, indicates the probability of fatality, based on travel speed. And, you know, it's incredible how much it increases, even going from 25 to 30 doubles the chance of fatality. So it tells the whole story, really, even 20, uh, especially if it's a residential zone, is, is really important.
Page fifty-seven, narrow travel lanes to 11-foot power lane, park lanes to accommodate new bicycle lanes. So my question was, it's probably on the next map, what are they now?
Which street is that talking about?
Between Heck and Pine.
On Asbury Ave.
Correct.
Yeah, uh, they are 17 feet, I wanna say, between...
That's what I said, it's probably on the next, I wrote that down without going to the next one, so forget that one, okay? Page sixty-one, and we're talking about Lake Avenue, it says, "Replace existing lakeside sidewalk between Main Street and Wesley Drive." There is no sidewalk between Main Street and Emery Street, so we can't replace something that isn't there.
On Lake Ave.
On Lake Ave.
On the south side.
On the south side.
Between Main Str- oh, between Main Street and...
And, and Emery, there is no sidewalk.
No, there is, between Bond and Emery on the lake side.
You got the, it, it's the, geez, I know. No, you got the parking, you got the parking, you got the...
The island, right?
Fifty years ago, I mean...
But there is a sidewalk on the north side of that island.
Okay, then, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not necess- it's not along the lake, it's, it's...
It's not an easy...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's there, but it's not.
Right.
And, and the, again, this is just all planned, I mean, I have no problem with adding sidewalks, but, uh...
We'll clarify the limits of the sidewalks, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Sidewalks are good, and as far as like, the other recommendation, as far as like, DLA Drive, we asked the state to do that, the state said no. To put sidewalks along DLA Drive, and technically, the property belongs to them.
Right.
So, you know, technically, they should be cutting the grass every month. I've been saying that for 20 years now.
We, we fought a lot of battles with the state on DLA Drive, we don't have a good winning record yet, so...
Thank you. State of New Jersey. Again, page sixty-three, LTSF three, says the 30 miles per hour, I mean, again, our part, the majority part, we can slow that down.
Yeah, I, in a town like this, of this size, the 25 mile an hour blanket speed limit is probably a good idea.
Okay, and this one, just bear with me, go to page sixty-seven. Maybe I, I just have my glasses on. It's existing Sunset Avenue, when I look at the top page, if I add up all the numbers, it comes to 51, if I look at the bottom half, it comes to 50, so what is it? And maybe I'm adding the math wrong.
No, you could be right, we'll take a look at, uh, and it's possible, 'cause the cross-section...
I'm talking about one as you put, so it's just again...
Yeah, the cross-section does change, though, as you go east on Sunset.
Yeah, with the curve and everything else, and that's another part where, like, I don't understand, and I, I understand what we want to do, add in a sidewalk there, but I don't see how that's possible without filling in the lake.
Yeah, it's pretty tight there, um, in some areas, but I, I think most of that south, uh, curb of Sunset Lake, you do have the room for the sidewalk. There's, there might be a couple pinch points, but you do have some...
There are some sinuses and everything where the curb is.
Where the curb is, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, by the park, there's a probably, have a sidewalk, so it's probably, the problem is, could it be from...
Further west.
From Emery to Grand, and then from Grand on, we could probably do a real problem, right? Uh, page sixty-nine, and this goes back to my question as far as definition of buses, because you got proposed for Fourth Avenue a 10-foot travel lane. That means no buses, be it school buses, or if we had to have a detour, which we've had many times, no New Jersey transit buses could go up and down Fourth Avenue with a 10-foot travel lane.
Right, yeah. I, I think, and, and we obviously already striped the bike lanes on Fourth Ave, west of Memorial. I believe that there are 6-foot bike lanes and 11-foot travel lanes. I think there's two extra feet, uh, in some areas, where we'd like snuck in some more width. Even though like, you know, 'cause there's a typical cross carway width, you know, 50, but there might be areas where the curb, you know, it comes in and out a little bit, so you might have more room.
I'm almost done. And again, uh, this is where we're headed, excellent report, and anything I'm saying is not negative whatsoever, it's just...
Sure.
Quite nitpicking, but that's what people tell me about that. Okay, and on page ninety-three is where I said we couldn't do it, there's not enough room on Sunset Lake to do, uh, the sidewalks all the way up and down. And that's, uh, redundant. Okay, so we get down to like Memorial Drive and Fourth on page ninety-eight, and page a hundred. Explain to me. Well, I can totally understand what your definition of a curb extension is. Is it a bump out, or is it?
It can be done in a lot of ways, you know, typically, it was just you move the curb out, you fill it in with concrete. It can be filled in with green infrastructure, if you have flooding, you can create a rock garden.
Would it be a bump out or a curb extension, or is it the same thing?
It's basically the same thing, yeah, yeah. And there are, like I said, it could all be concrete, or you could fill it with green infrastructure, you could put benches there.
And this is where we could also have, like, curb extensions, but at grade levels, so.
Yeah.
They're not connected to plowing and.
If you look at our, exactly, there's the Complete Streets Design guy gives an example. You could, especially if, because this is a busy area, you might have some trucks, you might have some buses. You could replace the concrete flush to the pavement. Most people would go around the concrete, but of a, like a bus.
Right.
Kinda like, you know, in Roundabout, they have, it's mountable. So that would be one way to do that, yep. As long as, you know, you had the proper ADA accommodations.
But as a light, a light, quick, cheap intervention, you could just put an epoxy-covered coating, like a paint coating with a stripe and a vertical bollard, that basically makes it a virtual curb extension that's flat. And that does the same, it has almost the same effect for drivers in that it narrows the roadway and makes them slow down.
Slips down traffic, which is what we're looking for.
Right.
Again, I think a great job, this is where the city wants to go. It's a plan, so as much as there's like, as far as expenditures, short term, middle term, and long term, I mean, there's not enough money in the budget to do all this in one year, guys.
No, but I think, as Pete mentioned in the beginning, having a plan like this really gives us a leg up for going for grants.
Which is fantastic.
Yeah, and, and Monmouth County, their, their bike policy is actually, they will not put bike lanes on county roadways unless you have an adopted plan in place. So just having this plan for those county roadways is the first step of even trying to get them to put bike lanes in. Now, after that, then we gotta argue about the details, but hopefully that should be a lot easier.
Again, very, very good job, and again, all the public that participated and everything, and all the committee members that participated. I thank you, and again, this is where Asbury wants to get to. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I got a couple, I have a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Just conceptually. Besides this, I feel that besides this being very comprehensive, I also, in reading it, I found that it was very easy to understand, which is not always, the two don't always work together.
It's true.
So that I, that I commend you for, just as much as it being complete. Now, there are a couple of things that I'd just like to get through, and once again, I'm with the mayor also, as to like, these are just questions that I'd like to make sure that we, just to get some answers for, it's not, you know. They might be a little nitpicky, but, you know, that's what we do. Now, these, these bump outs, when you mentioned something about them being green. Now, what I'd like to, and I don't know if it's in here, that, that when we do them, or the curb, the curb extensions, that we put that as a priority, that they are. That, you know, as we're trying to do throughout the whole city, more sustainable, and, and that we have that just as, as a thought process every time that we make, try to make that decision. The other piece that I don't see here is that, what are your thoughts about, everything that I've seen so far has, in my mind, has to do with during the day. What happens at night? Like, there's nothing about lighting, or is that not part of this concept? We really didn't, I mean, I, that's, that's just.
Ideally, we would have done like a light audit at night and gone around and found the dark spot, you know. I think that's a separate effort that has to happen.
That's more of a lighting plan for the city, as opposed to part of this plan.
I would, yeah.
So that was purposeful?
I think lighting was mentioned probably a couple times in the report.
I've noticed this significantly, it's along Memorial, when you get to the crosswalks, you can't even see the people standing there waiting to cross into your, like, right along the curb.
Yeah.
So, I predict on that street, especially, there's a likelihood that that's gonna be paved anytime soon.
Yeah, so, that's a good point. We were, the city was just awarded the municipal aid grant over $400,000 as part of, to do the Memorial Drive improvements. So as part of that, I think one of the things we should talk about with the engineering team is to make sure that lighting is considered, especially at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially on the southwest side, because, you know, that's, there's a lot of pedestrians outside crossing over to Manchester. You can't see, you really cannot see them at night at all, at those intersections.
Well, then, that's something that should be looked in soon, because the grant, excuse me, only covers Memorial from Asbury to.
Yeah.
Sixth Avenue, so if the southwest is bad, we should not wait, because Memorial Drive may not be done for two or three years, because I'm not sure if the council is gonna be willing to shut down Main Street and Memorial Drive at the same time. I've already asked the state, can we carry this $333,000 grant for a $5 million job over here until Main Street's down? Just because you got two major arteries going north and south, and both of them can't be shut down at the same time.
Right.
So, at least, I don't think both of them can. It's gonna take one heck of a detour to get anywhere in the city.
Yeah, no, it would.
One of the other things, I'm very glad that you mentioned, you had discussions about education. That's, that's great. I'm also concerned about, as far as the education is concerned, I understand that we have to alert this, the, you know, cyclist motorist of what, how to react, or how to deal with these new, this new signage and these new lanes and whatnot. But I would like to also make sure that within that, the education that's also included in there is just, how are you supposed, like, how do you let someone know that you're doing something? You know, from, from, from just a bicycle going down the road. It's kind of like, you know, I know that, that the cars a lot of times are looked at as, as the enemy, if you will, and sharing, and that we don't, the cars don't share, but it's, you know, we need to make sure that people also ride bicycles safely.
One thing you could do is share a lot of this same information with the bike shops.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that, I think that we should, for sure.
I don't remember if.
Signs throughout the city?
Yeah, I don't remember. Do you guys do bike safety rodeos?
Yes.
Yes, we have a very proactive.
All right.
That's what MA is something, and I, I know the Complete Streets group does that as well.
Or even in the, in the bike share program, when somebody is renting one of the bikes.
Yeah.
Just to have it in the basket that's there, or something like that.
It is a two-way street.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, you know, totally agree, I think part of the issue has, is a cultural institutional thing, where when you went for driver's education, when you all were probably in school, you never learned how to, you know, what are the proper rules of the road when riding a bike. That is changed now, New Jersey just a year or two ago passed a law where bicycle education, how to properly ride a bike in the street, is now part of the driver education courses. So hopefully those future generations will be better at this than we are, but.
Maybe we should know too.
Yeah. I think that's a big part of it, and, and it is a challenge. I think education is a huge important factor that, that we do need to do a better job of, of getting the word out that, here are, you know, here are the rules of the road.
Right, but I'm glad that that was already mentioned, that, in addition to that, it is, how are you going to maneuver around these new, these new visuals that you're, that you're hitting on.
Right, and the other part is that they're all designed to be consistent with statewide standards. So if you see Design X in Hoboken, or, you know, Cambria, or here, it's essentially the same.
So we have like, we have the bike share, and when you go up the train coming from New York, we have the big sign that kinda, the map, which is really not oriented in the right direction. But if something like that is near each of the bike shares.
Yeah.
And there's a map with the bicycle routes, and they make little handouts that have the bicycle route in there as well.
It's a great idea, and something we definitely look at doing. Even have the bike share operator provide something like that.
Have you ever thought about when you come off of Asbury, come into Asbury Avenue, off the Parkway, where they have that big sign, maybe putting something up to be aware of bicycles, share the road, that type of thing?
Yeah, that could be part of this whole gateway idea. So you wanna make people realize that you're not out on the highway, you're not out in the suburbs anymore. This is, this is a small city, people walking and biking, you need to behave appropriately, so, yeah.
Is there, is there any difference from, you know, when, when we're talking about all this various striping and all the, that's looking to be done, is the, is there any difference in the longevity of the paint as opposed to what we use today? I mean, is it, is it any shorter, longer, or same?
The paint is probably about the same, but the thermoplastic striping would last a lot longer, and I assume that's what's happening.
Yeah, so like on Fourth Ave and Sunset Ave, it's the same thermoplastic striping that would, that is like the center line, or, or anything else. It's, it's long-lasting, and by long-lasting, it's like 10 years.
Meaning that it's not any shorter than what we have today?
No, yeah, exactly.
And it's longer than that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And even the signs, if you've seen, you know, the school crossing signs, they're really highly, the retroreflective material has a much longer life than it used to.
Well, that's good, that's, that's all good. And just as, as I mentioned before, I'm concerned about any time that we're going to turn anything into a one-way, or any time that there is angled parking that we're backing in, I'm very concerned to do a study first to say, you know what? Is there, you know, how's it gonna impact our current enforcement with the LPR? So, you know, I'm sure that we have some numbers that we could probably deal with and try to figure out how bad it is, or how insignificant it is.
Yeah.
An impact, and that you have, you know, what's Plan B to hit those.
I, I think that's totally reasonable, and something we should look at. I mean, on Ocean Ave, if, if we had to go front-end angled, it wouldn't be the end of the world, because the back end really also helps you with cyclists and their interaction.
And safety is, it's a lot safer.
If the cyclists are now behind the cars and are never interacting with them, then we probably could do front-end in. I still think the back end is a better option, but.
Swing around and try to pull frontwards if it's, if it's back in angle parking, like they did when we put up.
Yeah, well, this would be one-way now, so you couldn't really.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll be coming this way, but they'll be used to pulling in frontwards, they'll turn in, I don't know, I guess you're right.
Yeah, that'll be hard.
They will do that.
People will, there will be one or two.
And just, and just one other thing, is there any, just to understand, because I couldn't think of anything, but maybe you guys already know. Is there any impact of turning that, turn, like, let's say if we say Ocean going one-way, is there any other impact to the side streets that are going east and west, to Ocean going north only? Is there any impact to those, the parking there, meaning that people can get easy in, easy out, all that?
All that stays the same, and in fact, I tend to think it's a little easier now, because let's say you're coming down the 100 block of First Ave, heading eastbound, you can make that almost like a U-turn very easily, because there's no opposing traffic now when you're one way northbound, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It works both ways.
It's probably, it's probably a 50/50, I want to say it's a benefit. If I go down there now and I park on Fifth Avenue, I can make a right.
Right.
And go to Fourth and go home. Now I gotta make a left, and I can't make a left on Sunset, or.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, you're, they're one ways and everything, I mean, so.
Yeah.
But it's a wash.
It's a wash.
If we think it's a wash, then that's better than.
And your previous question, I, you sort of alluded to this, but I think that you, in a lot of these, when you redid these roads, you'd need some enhanced coordination with the public. I don't know what you do right now, you might just say, oh, we're gonna repave this street in six months or something. You might wanna have a, you know, an information center, I mean, certainly for Ocean, I think it's gonna take, you know, a little better coordination, but it's, you know, it's the way things work now, I think, just people wanna know what's going on. They don't wanna wake up and find out something's.
We have a great Nixle, we have great revenue newsletter. Yeah, so, I mean, we can get the word to locals.
Take advantage of those sources, yeah.
So, anybody else from the board that has some questions?
I do. First, the Main Street in Springwood, I'm assuming that that corner is not on the plan because it's already been designed in the roadway diagram.
That's, that's correct. That's DOT jurisdiction, and then they've already have a plan for it. Which will be better, because they are gonna introduce left turn phases. So there'll be a left turn phase coming from, if you're coming west on Lake, or east on Springwood, there'll be a left turn phase, and then there'll be a through phase, which will help with that, you know, in, in terms of vehicle, that weird. Yeah.
And to Memorial Drive, south of Bangs Avenue. Just because I know it doesn't look like it's very busy, that's very busy roadway, because there aren't any stops, but people are constantly crossing this roadway to go to the strip mall and to the train station. And even though there is a.
RRFB, a rapid flashing beacon, yeah.
One, in one place.
Yeah.
And two, no one recognizes that it's there or what it's for. So even though they might be standing next to it, they don't use it, and they're praying that they can get across Memorial Drive. So, I would like us to consider.
Might be a, those things work in certain applications, and it's probably too busy for that. There's, there are other things that might work better there.
All right, but.
Yeah.
And people cross constantly, and you know crosswalks.
Yeah, well, and that's, I know what you're talking about, people coming basically from Lincoln Village across to, yeah.
Lincoln, Frederick Douglass, all of those.
And there's, and that's part of the problem, is there's no crossing street, so it makes it difficult to, to put a crosswalk, it would have to be a mid-block crosswalk, which has a whole nother set of issues. It's something we could think about, though, and look at, what's the right answer.
But that wouldn't even be our decision, that's a county.
Yeah, another good point, it's county jurisdiction.
Okay. And I, just clarification, sidewalks on the, on both sides of the train station, are you saying running parallel to Memorial Drive? I'm on page three. The plan recommends installing sidewalks on both sides of the train station, so I'm just asking, where are we talking at? On Memorial Drive?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And I was really surprised to know that we have 80 bus stops in the city?
Yeah, that's.
In each direction.
In each direction, yeah.
40/40.
We're trying to get more. We need more on Springwood Avenue.
On, and I don't know if I read this correctly, and I don't know what page you're on, but coming from Asbury Avenue to the boardwalk, between Kingsley and Ocean was gonna remain two-way, so they could get into the parking lots. Did I read that correctly, or?
Yeah, we, we kind of, we went back and forth a lot on that. I think when we get into, this is another one, when we get into the final design for Ocean Ave, we have to think about what that block is, because it could be two-way, it could be one-way. I mean, I think we have to think about how people use those parking lots and, and that signal. I think it could go either way, probably.
Has to be integrated with the land use, and it's probably changed there.
The initial idea was to be able, you know, if the parking lot stays, to let those people out without, you know, clogging up that northbound Ocean Ave. So immediately to the east, north, like that hook after the parking lot, you know, if you're gonna go right, it's only one-way. And the two-way basically ends at that entrance to the lot.
You could move that entrance, or exit from the parking lot, you could move it to the west and have it come out on that little side street there that runs from.
Wesley Lake Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, there actually already is a driveway, it's just blocked off, so, yeah.
Maybe that's, that's where that exit should be, and that way you don't have that crossing traffic.
It's possible.
And I just wanna echo everybody else, and that this is a really comprehensive, complete plan, you've done an excellent job. And I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got a couple of questions or comments. I, I wonder if you're gonna make Ocean Avenue one-way north, whether you should reconsider making Kingsley one-way south. I think that has a lot of support from old timers in the, in the city. Whether that's a good idea or not, but I think it's something you might wanna look at. And when you're looking at the planters on the, your streets, I think they need to be kept low so that your plantings do not obstruct your vision.
Yep. You know, any redesign like that, it starts with a concept at our level, and it would pass through traffic engineering. So, you know, there are issues about how far do you have to go to turn around, that sort of thing. You know, if you miss your turn, you don't want. You know, if you miss your turn, uh, you don't want people making crazy U-turns, so, you know, after a while, it'll be the new normal, but, um, uh, you know, there are issues like this, you know, the parcel of that, it, just how do you get out of that parking lot, that sort of thing. So, it, it would have to be, you know, elevated to that next level.
Well, I'm just thinking of things that I've seen in other places. And, you know, as far as the, the planters and that type of thing, I've seen several different types and when you get things that are, when the planters are, uh, almost window height on a car, when they start putting plants in, you can't see what's behind them. And, uh, I just wondered also on your.
The science of how to do that is sort of evolving and, you know, Mike can tell you that.
Yeah, it's just something to consider.
Yeah, I know, you're totally right.
And by the way, I, I am not criticizing the report at all.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
I think it's an excellent report and I, uh, just a couple of things that occurred, occurred to me is, as I've listened to people talk, uh, on our east-west streets. Did you consider the possibility of, uh, diagonal parking on one side and no parking on the other? Now, I know I just mentioned this to Michael, uh, earlier this evening, and I don't know whether or not that would increase the number of parking spaces significantly, significantly. If it does not, then it's, you know, just a good idea, it doesn't work, you know, but.
We, I mean, we did a study when I first started here on Eighth Ave, the whole stretch, three or four blocks, and we looked at putting angle parking on one side or the other. I think the net gain was like, something like five spaces over the entire length because of the number of driveways.
Again, I don't know, it was just a question that, that popped into my head.
I, I think it varies from street to street, what you got. I mean, if, if you don't have a lot of driveways, there's a lot more opportunity to introduce more parking, but in a lot of cases on those east-west streets, there's a lot of driveways, which is good. You want the residents to park off-street.
Well.
And you want the bike lanes.
The thing that brought that up is kind of nine, ten, Fourth Avenue and the, the parking issue that we have there. And if, you know, is there a way to accommodate more parking on the street? On Memorial, as you, uh, as you go on the west, I'm sorry, the east side of Memorial Drive, is the property line, the right-of-way, uh, at the curb line or is that, is that's where it is? Cause if not, you may be able to pick up a few feet behind the curb to make, uh, bike lanes. Again, you don't wanna get too close to the track.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I don't know exactly where the line falls, it's somewhere near the curb.
It's just something you might wanna look at to see.
But even, but even, um, regardless if there was a property line or not, there's certain easements that, with, with the transit tracks, you can't get too close.
Get too, too close.
And, and there's a, on that east side, there's a lot of utility poles along that way. So, trying to design something there would probably be pretty difficult. Not to say it can't be done.
Again, it's just a thought that might give you a few more feet, depending on what the configuration is.
Yeah.
And, and I just have a couple of other little comments on the, uh, some typos in the, in the report. Somewhere in the first few pages, there's a reference of the intersection of Ridge and Sunset. I think you mean Bridge and Sunset.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on page thirty-five, when they were talking about the priority intersections, you're talking about, the text says, uh, seven intersections, the next line says, six intersections. So, just, just to make it consistent.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I think the, uh, report is pretty thorough and, uh, I think you've done a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board, any other comments, I mean, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go for it.
It has nothing to do with this. But since I have all your traffic, gurus here. So I, so I have GPS in my car. I don't, I have a flip phone. Does GPS tell you the fastest route to get in town? Or does GPS tell you the best paved route to get in town? Or a combination of both?
Do you wanna take?
This has nothing to do with this report, it has to do with Wednesday night.
Select toll, not toll, highway, not highway, but condition of pavement, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Thank you. End of conversation.
Yeah. Now, I will say that there, there is a mechanism for municipalities to come into agreement with the GPS providers to make changes to their routing.
Have we done that?
We haven't yet.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure, like, GPS doesn't say, go down the street because it was just paved?
No, it does not.
Okay, well, that's what we're being accused of, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the, uh, board? I'd like to open up for a public, any public questions? If anybody would like to come up, ask the questions, we have three minutes, one time around. And just as a reminder, you also do have another opportunity to make comments after the question period.
No mic?
No mic.
No mics. No, if your, if your questions are, if your questions are to these gentlemen.
Speak freely, please.
Uh, Michael Christian, uh, let her know if you're bad. So, uh, quick comment and then a question.
Alright, question only, question only, sorry.
Okay, so, um, oh, there we go. So, when you heard, when, when you talked about Ocean Avenue and you showed where you had, uh, the bike lanes that were on the same side and protected bike lanes.
Yes.
When you showed Kingsley, you showed non-protected bike lanes.
Correct.
And I'm wondering, and, and the same thing Memorial, cause I think once, one Memorial was you had parking in one scenario.
Right.
There's no parking Memorial right now, am I correct about that?
Uh, there is north of Asbury Avenue.
West side.
Alright, um, so my question is, if you had that, cause I, you know, in Europe, it's very common having both bike lanes on the same side like that, protected, works really well in Amsterdam, London, and so forth. And I love that on Ocean Avenue, why would you not do that on Kingsley and Memorial?
And, I, I know Main Street, we would love it, why, why not have protected bike lanes in every scenario? Makes such a huge difference.
Do you wanna answer it or?
I know you probably get this question a lot.
So, this kinda goes back, before we had, we, we did recommend the one-way south for Kingsley initially. That supported the two-way separated bike lanes. With the changes leaving the two lanes, there is just not the space, um, in keeping with the parking.
Right.
So, we actually, if you go back to our previous iteration of the report, you actually see exactly that. And at this point, it, it was reverted.
The, the other challenge that you have is, as much as curb extensions are great and, and are great at shortening the, the crossings, it make it a little difficult when you have to make protected bike lanes, cause you have to design them differently. Because now, if, if, cause you always wanna ride against the curb, right? So, if I'm coming down a protected bike lane, I now have to go around the curb extension and then come back behind the parking. And inevitably, you end up losing a lot of parking because you have to fit that lane behind, like, around the curb extension and behind the parking, if that makes sense.
So, Kingsley's not wide enough for that, to, to, for that design you're talking about?
Not without.
It just seems like such a wide street.
Not without taking away either a lane of travel or a lane of parking.
Okay, and say, is that the same problem with Memorial, having protected bike lanes? Either wa- both on one side or?
I think, I think we did propose protected.
Yeah, actually, Memorial did show protected, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so how do you decide, what should I decide?
Well, north of Asbury Ave.
Okay, north of Asbury Ave, right, okay. Alright, that's my question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, good evening, everybody, I'm Doug McQueen, uh, for Westwood Court and with the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition. First, I just wanna thank Pete and his team for doing such a comprehensive job. This really, this plan is really well-written and very comprehensive. And thanks to Mike for putting all the stakeholder groups together, cause I think, I think you guys came up with a great, great product. I'll just try and move quick so that I can get through all these, uh, points. Do you want me to just ask all these questions first and then, uh, you can try and answer them or I'll remind you if you miss any?
Yeah, if you have stuff written down that we can take back.
Yeah, I just scribbled them, well, that was, uh, one question, is, is there any opportunity for written comments? Would that help or is that not helpful at this point?
You can send stuff to Mike, uh, he can get it to us, yeah.
Well, well, actually, if, if we're, if we are, if you're looking for us to vote on this tonight, then written comment.
Can't really.
Yeah, might be a good point, that, that's fine.
We, I mean.
If you, if that's what you're looking for tonight.
And to respond to that, we did, uh, in January, publicized the final draft plan and did, did have a forum for people to provide comments.
Yeah, I think I did submit something too.
You did, actually, yeah.
Let's see what they look like.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we can answer a bunch of them now.
Sure.
Um, as far as speed limits for Main and Memorial, are we doing any work to work with the county and the state to try and see if we can get twenty-five, is that discussion underway at all? Go ahead. For, um, the, uh, diagram you showed of Memorial, I believe it was north of Monroe Avenue, the final draft that I downloaded from the city website showed the two-way protected bike lane on the west side of Memorial. Is, I, I'm just curious, which one is the final proposal or which one you think is preferable?
This is the final one.
Oh, that's the final with, uh.
And, and, and the reason being, the reason being, um, two-way bike lanes are great except when there's not a traffic signal. So, you could imagine that two-way cycle lane on the west side of Memorial, if you're a driver coming up to third or fourth, there's no signal, you make that left turn.
You could left on someone behind you.
You may, you may not see a cyclist on that side of the road.
Completely understand.
Yeah. Now, if there were signals, it'd be a different story, but.
Okay.
Bike signals.
As far as, um, the two-way bike lane on Ocean Avenue, on the east side of Ocean Avenue, is there, uh, any intent to coordinate this with neighboring municipalities? I would tell you that from some of the advocacy work that we've been doing, we've been speaking with advocates in a lot of neighboring towns in Monmouth County, and they are very interested in seeing some kind of continuous amenity that connects the networks to neighboring towns. So, at some point, this might be worth discussing with neighboring municipalities about a coordinated effort to contain this up and down the ocean front. Finally, to John's concern earlier about pedestrians on that two-way bike lane at Ocean and the concern about them being conflicted with traffic, what about the possibility of putting signage there that says that bikes have to yield to pedestrians?
Yes.
Along that two-way bike lane?
Yeah.
Just that way, so, it's a wide lane and the cyclists, as they started to make their way down, can see continuously signs that say, yield to pedestrians, yield to pedestrians.
Uh, I agree, and that's a, definitely a design detail that we would get into when we do the engineering design. It, it's a very, very common thing to see markings in the bike lane that say, yield to pedestrians. As people are riding and looking down, they see that they're supposed to stop.
The pedestrians are the most vulnerable users, so you wanna just prioritize them. And then lastly, as far as implementation, um, this is probably more of a state council question, but is there any, um, plan to earmark some of the parking funds to help get some of these things implemented? I mean, the, the two tie in together so much as far as the pedestrian experience tying into the parking experience. I mean, the better we make this pedestrian experience, which this plan obviously does, the more willing people would be willing to park further away and walk if it's well-lit and it's safe and they're comfortable crossing, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's something we're thinking about all the time. Actually, one of the things that we've just started doing this year, um, the, the, we do, we pretty much do an installation of one new traffic signal every year. Um, and this year, we're actually using the parking utility to pay for the signal instead of just the general fund because we, you can use those funds, parking utility funds sometimes, with the way the laws are written, you can't always use it for just anything. But if it's related to transportation in that way, then yeah, you can.
Well, I'm really glad that this plan gives us a roadmap and then maybe we can do it in little increments and. Like we said, it's not gonna happen overnight, but this gives us a roadmap to get there, so I think it's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
So, I'll say, I don't think there's anything in those questions that necessitates.
No, I think we're.
Hi, Polly Shilka, eleven hundred fifth.
Hi.
Great job, I've, I've gone through ninety, it's ninety-four pages and I'm in awe, it's a fantastic job. Um, a couple of questions, we've, we've mentioned these, these things sort of peripherally before. We're talking about, um, twenty is plenty, twenty-five mile an hour speed limits in, on Main Street and, or citywide, uh, I think is a fantastic idea if we can get that implemented. And in addition, what about no right turn on red anywhere in the city? It's so dangerous for pedestrians and for people on bikes, and now that we're going to have a bike network, we're gonna be seeing hopefully more people using the bike lanes and riding their bikes in the street. And as you're, you have the right of way to cross the street and drivers just routinely don't even stop at, you know, when there's, there's a light, they, they assume that right turn, and it's such an antiquated idea anyway, was created in the seventies to save gas, that people have become so conditioned that they can just turn on a right, you know, on a, on a red signal. New York City did it, I don't know what the deal is in New Jersey. I think, I understand there might be some restrictions on making a decision like that.
No, no, that, that would just be a municipal decision. I think we, that's something we definitely wanna take a look at. I know on Main Street, when they end up installing the new signals, there are, I think most of the signals are gonna have that, no turn, the right turn on red restriction. I think anywhere where there's pedestrian, uh, presence, which is pretty much anywhere in the city, we can definitely take a look at it and do it.
Yeah, and then there's an education element to it, to all of it.
Sure.
People are gonna have to get used to it, but they will.
Anyone else for questions, any one from the public?
Can I ask a question?
Sure you can.
Oh, I'm sorry, put your question.
Oh, no, I guess we're done.
It, it goes to Mr. Manzella, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, Ernest, do you wanna go? Okay, go ahead.
Comments next?
Sorry, the, the comments will come next.
Ern McNolia, Deal Lake Drive, Asbury, uh, I had a question. What are the laws about bicycles now in Asbury Park on sidewalks?
Uh, prohibited.
Excuse me?
Prohibited. We, we have an ordinance on the books in the city that, uh, cycle riding is not allowed.
Yeah, in New Jersey, that's up to the municipality, so that's what, that's what.
Well, that's the question I'm asking, what's the municipal law in Asbury?
The municipal ordinance right now is that bicycle riding is not allowed.
I thought I, uh, opened it and it said, uh, anyone up to fourteen years old can ride on the sidewalk in Asbury.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so now we have people up to fourteen can ride on the sidewalk?
Right, because they're, they're typically, children ride slower and don't ride as fast as adults.
So, that means people over fourteen can't ride on the sidewalk?
Correct, they should be in the street.
Now, are any of your logistics or planning based on going out and seeing what actually transpires in Asbury on a Friday, a Saturday, Saturday night?
We spent quite a lot of time here and, uh, we were here on the weekends, uh, early in the morning, that's, that's part of what we do. We also have a lot of data, uh, we looked at the bike share data, it showed where people are riding, and then there are several other, online applications that tell us where people are riding. So, we, we, observation is a big part of what we do, we don't just look at the maps and look at the street view and that sort of thing, so.
Do you, uh, observe any people over fourteen riding on the sidewalk?
Of course, absolutely.
So, here's a question I have, if that's the code and that's the law, why isn't it enforced in Asbury?
I, I can't ask that question, but I will say that the, if the facilities are not present, and that's what this plan is doing, is recommending the facilities, that it, it makes it, if, if you're not comfortable riding on the street and you do, the bicycling is the only way you can get around, you might be more comfortable riding on the sidewalk. Is it the right thing to do? No, but as a method of, of survival, is it the thing you do? Some people do.
But it's against the code, it's against the law.
That's correct, it is.
Okay.
Running a stop sign, running a red light.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was it, I missed that.
Oh, no, there was a comment from the audience, which really is not relevant.
No, I didn't hear.
It's, it's not relevant, it really isn't. Thank you. Another question?
So, yeah, there's, are you aware of the new state laws about bicycling that have just been trying to make it universal? I mean, they're really trying to enforce everything, bike lights, pedestrian stopping, in other words, bicycles have to yield. And I, I understand the plan that they actually adopted makes riding a bicycle like driving a car.
Well, actually, the code, motor vehicle code treats not just cycling, but, um, I think rollerblading, it's got a lot of things like a vehicle, so you have to signal when you have to stop, uh, you have to observe a capable walk pretty much as, as a bicycle as you would as a driver.
Okay, uh, relative to the boardwalk, which you said has hours for bicycling?
That's correct.
What are the hours for bicycling?
Uh, I believe the current. I believe the current ordinance is before 10:00 a.m., it's allowed, and after 10:00 a.m., it's not allowed until, like, I think, 6:00 a.m.
Yeah, I think it's like 10:00 p.m.
There you go.
Yeah, I think it's like 10:00 p.m.
Is that the law? The code?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
What is it from 10?
After 10:00 a.m., bicycling is not allowed on the boardwalk.
Are there certain dates around that?
You're on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, is it like Memorial Day, or is it the 15th?
It's, whatever it is, we don't have it in front of us. Call tomorrow and we'll give it to you.
What?
Call tomorrow, and the city clerk will give it to you. You do not have to file an op, they say file an op, call me, I'll give it to you. We just don't have it in front of us right now, so we're not going to give you wrong information.
Okay, well, I think it's midnight.
Okay.
Okay. You could be right, but if you want to call me tomorrow, call me, and I'll give you the exact hours.
Where do I call you?
732-988-7915.
Is that here?
That's my home.
Okay, so, the other thing is, one last thing. Will, since Asbury's basically a kind of town where there's not that many people around for about nine months, and a lot of what we're talking about is, I guess, from June, July, August, September, when you get 10, 20,000 more people here, and on events even more, and of course, a lot of them bring bikes and et cetera, et cetera. So, knowing that, I guess, Asbury has a lot of provision for, for activity, bar events and alcohol events, will bicycling and even walking in these defined areas be protected by, let's say, consumption laws, meaning...
Finish your question.
Meaning, you're going to set up a bike path, someone decides to ride in that bike path, they now have to, shouldn't be drinking, shouldn't be under the influence, just like a car.
Sure.
Because they get in that white lane, and you share it even with workers who are supposed to yield.
Sure.
And now they're under the influence or drunk. And this could be a...
I don't know offhand what the law is in terms of, in terms of drive, or biking while intoxicated, but I will tell you that personally, I would prefer someone to, if they were going to take that activity, which they should not, to be on a bike instead of a 10-pound, 10-ton car. But, to your point, I don't know what exactly the law is in terms of biking while intoxicated.
Any other questions from the public? All set? Okay, like, do I have a motion to open for public comment?
So, vote.
Second. All right, anyone who wants to make any comments about this application from the public? No comments? Motion to close, public?
Second.
Okay.
Can I ask my logic question?
Go for it.
How can the planning board ask you to ask the council as soon as possible, to ask the county, which I don't think will be a problem, to reduce the speed limit for Memorial, and ask the state? So, Wednesday night, can you ask the council? Or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
Well, we have to get a resolution, I think, probably on...
Well, no, but I think first you find out if you have three votes.
Okay.
And then, but I mean, I'm all for it, so, but I'm only one of five, so, if it came from the planning board to you to make that suggestion to the council...
It carries a lot of weight.
Sure.
Well, that's, that's one thing that I think that, I'm with you, John, and I think that that's why we were kind of, I'm looking for some direction here on how do we move forward with this?
Right.
Because obviously, we brought up a number of different concerns, none of them, you know, earth-shattering, but they're just minor changes that would, we would like to consider to be put into this report. How do we proceed with that, Jack? Do we just mention what they are?
And long-lasting, you don't put it in a resolution, you put it in the plan. So, if, for example, the speed limit wanted to be reduced, that's a point that you want added in as an amendment as part of this in the right, appropriate spot.
Okay.
That it sticks out, that it's there, it's a recorded document, it's a direction of the city.
Okay. All right, then, could we, could we, I would ask the board to kind of come up with some, I know you guys have a lot of notes.
Right.
They've taken, and do we need to mention some of those, or you have all those, and then you'll come back to us, or how do we want to deal with this?
No, it's not, it's not the jurisdiction, it is a discussion. It's not within the jurisdiction of the planning board, but a lot of work goes in this border zone gray area of what the planning board should do.
Right.
There's no other way for the planning board to recommend to the mayor and council to reduce the speed limit, because that's not something they do.
Decrease.
Decrease. Clean the way, either increase the duty, or that's within the jurisdictions, and that's not within the jurisdiction of the board. But if the board really wants to do this, and really want to pursue all the comment in here, I'm going to let it do it.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think that there are a lot of comments that are very similar to that, like, like, let's say, like, what was mentioned about considering the networking through the other towns that are, that are here. It's a concept, it's a concept that they're thinking about, is considering the right turn on red, you know, considering that, considering lowering the speed limits where possible, considering that the bump outs or the curb extensions are green, as a, you know, considering the bus widths within these, some of the roads.
Right.
That, adding the fact that Prospect is a busy street, as opposed to potentially, in some places, it was mentioned, it might not be. Considering lighting on, while some of these roads are being paved and whatnot, considering the lighting there. There were some places where there was inconsistency in the report, said some of the things that Jim had mentioned.
Couple typos, yeah.
Some of the math that was there. Obviously, the education, you've heard much about that already, and, you know, considering the impact of license plate recognition on changing the angle of the parking. I think that there are probably other things that other people have mentioned that we would, if they would like to state them, and that we would like to see those in the, in the report. I don't know if there's anything else.
I think that was everything.
So, if we approve the report, does that mean that this is now the direction the city's going to go in, or is it not, I mean, not only is it the direction, but this is the only plan, like, if in a month, someone says, "Well, I don't want to do it this way, I want to do it that way," does the city have the option to make changes?
Sure. Yeah, it's under the purview of the planning board to amend the plan if needed.
What if we create a, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get to, what I'm trying to get to is, you know...
Not under oath.
Yeah, it's not a hearing.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm thinking about something else.
Go ahead.
What's this one?
NCAA basketball?
Yes. Michael Sullivan, Parkland, it's a planning board plan. What I'm trying to get to is here, is what they've, what they've done is a plan, right?
Right.
And there's so many details that are going to have to be worked out with the implementation of this plan, that it would be impossible for the planning board to think of every one of these circumstances. You've raised some very interesting issues, I think. You know, one of my questions was, you know, we should think about adapting the curb extensions to, for green infrastructure where possible, recognizing the stormwater quality, quantity, you should say. But that, there's a lot of flex, the governing body and the implementation, the design documents and the conceptualization, and ultimately, the construction of these things, needs to have the flexibility to not have to look back at this plan and say, "Well, we made it so specific that now we have to go amend." I mean, we don't want to have to amend this.
No, 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 I'm just saying conceptually, that these are some of the things we want to consider, say.
So, what I was, what I was thinking was that, and I know that it may not carry the weight, as Jack is saying, but you could have a resolution to adopt this plan, the sub-element or appendix to the master plan tonight, with the, with the resolution elucidating these specific priorities for implementation that would not necessarily require amendment of the plan if some of those weren't. And that's what I'm trying to get, trying to find a way for you to be able to do it without having to double back on yourselves and without having to spend a lot of...
No, I would rather not have, come back, it's just a matter of doing it right.
List of eight or 10 things, and then say, on a case-by-case basis, specific to the context and the conditions, consider these, these issues.
And so, that we're part of the record with the adoption of this plan amendment?
Yes.
Because this, you're amending your master plan with this amendment, but not tying hands with this amendment.
Oh, yeah, right, we, actually, that's what I'm kind of looking for, is to figure out, how do we move forward with just saying, "All right, well, there's some concepts that we would like to just make sure that they're in there." And it's not that, that we're saying, we're trying not to, to kind of tighten and tighten you guys up so that we, you have to do an amendment, an addendum to get out of it, it's not that, it's just, conceptually, we'd like to, to bring some of these things forward, that some of the members have read.
Well, as a resolution items, I think that's a, that's a really good way to do it. That's very clear.
Yeah, it's, but they're, I think they're fairly simple concepts, it's not like, like, things like, like, putting in, you know, whether or not, you know, these things add up, or these, these are, these are, what do you call it? Just making sure that the facts are the same, I'm not looking at those kind of things. I'm just saying, the concept of, of the networking, of the concept of the no right on red.
I mean, I think you had a pretty concise list of items that we would like to see in there.
There aren't a lot.
So, I think we can probably, I mean, at the board's discretion, adopt it with those items in the resolution, and then the final element will work those in.
Yeah.
Because I don't think they're major changes that are going to require...
They aren't, they're, they're, they truly, I don't think they bind you.
Statements, yeah.
They, there are things, in some cases, you'll be able to do, in some cases, you won't.
Right.
Based on the situation.
Yeah, in fact, we could add that as page I, resolution of adoption, enumerate these things, and then we'll go back and correct the six versus seven, and type those.
Yeah, those, those I wouldn't include in there, those are...
That we have to fix.
You'll do any.
But if you adopted a resolution that enumerated these general principles, we just insert that as a page, you know, right, right before the table contents, then it's, it's part of the official document.
I mean, I'm okay with that, is that, are you guys okay with that?
I think we all want to do this and do it right, but it's starting to scare me, because I don't think all of us are sold on Ocean Avenue being one-way and Kingsley being two-way, so...
That wasn't one of the conditions.
Okay, I mean, so how does that stay, so does that get just automatically passed?
We could put a sentence in the Kingsley paragraph that says, "Consider..."
I mean, that's, that's one example out of maybe 30 I'm bringing up. I mean, again, you know, Prospect to me is busy, is a deal-breaker, though, where, again, is this going to be painted in the street that could be repainted or, so, I mean, so we want to do it right, and we're on agreement, this has to be done. And I'm not saying, "Let's delay it two weeks or a month or something like that." It's just, it is confusing now, how to do it the right way without, like, if we adopted something, is it going to be set in stone, that it can't come back and be changed?
No, it can.
Okay.
The planning board at any time can amend this plan.
Yeah, it's a starting point.
Okay, so that's what, that's, I think, what we all, we want to start, we want to start as soon as possible, but we want to have flexibility as far as future. We have like six key things we want to mention, we can throw those in there, but then, number seven is, and then, any other changes are still open to the planning board.
Yes.
What are the changes?
I don't know, I mean, it's a 160-page document, like, you know...
So, then, if you adopt this plan, then you adopt the plan. If there's something in there that's inconsistent, and it's not, not what you want to do, it's interesting.
But they say it's not written in stone, they say it can come back, that they have to be changed.
You should have to have another public...
You'd have to have another public hearing, you'd have to do an amendment to your master plan, you'd have to go through all the notice requirements again and everything else.
So...
So, if you, if you, if you find something in this plan that's not in accordance with the majority of the voter board, you don't adopt that, no, you change it, and if you have to come back in two weeks, you're not going to do it.
Is it worth having?
In the case of, like, so, these are concept-level designs, anything would have to go through design engineering, feasibility, design engineering.
Correct.
Right? So, like, Ocean Avenue is not going to become one-way without a number of other studies that, like, would happen. So, I think, I don't see that in passing it, that we're somehow saying, like, "Okay, this is up to, you know, feasibility standard." Are we?
Well, if you have a master plan element that says it recommends turning Ocean Avenue into a one-way thoroughfare, that's the, and you vote on it, you've just voted, yes.
Right, right, but as part of it, we would expect, like you said, feasibility studies to make sure that they're, that it's, that it's the right thing to do.
Well, there, yeah, there's always, this is the road, this is the philosophical dog when it comes to implementation.
Right.
If it's contrary to engineering concepts, proper traffic engineering concepts, it's impossible.
Then, then you'll be coming back.
That's right.
You won't be able to do it one way.
But that's not necessarily true, that they would have to come back.
It's true.
Right, because, because it might just never happen.
It just might, and, and they may go the other way, even so, it's contrary, it could be contrary to the master plan.
Yeah. I mean, it's, this is a non-binding document, but I think it's just a statement that the city would like to see this, this conceptual type of network emerge in the city. I don't think, you know, if, if an engineering study came back and said that there's no way you're getting rid of southbound traffic on Ocean, then you just wouldn't.
Right.
It's not like, you know...
Right, it just wouldn't happen, because obviously, we have to do all that.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm not, I don't have any issues with that at all.
So, you're saying, if we adopt this, it's non-binding and changes can be made?
Absolutely.
And new considerations can be taken into account?
Right, it's not like it's zoning ordinance, it says the setback is exactly...
In, in 10 years from now, all cars may drive themselves, and we'll have bikes everywhere, so, you never know.
Just want to be clear, it's not like...
10 years from now, how many of these people will be on the...
Anything you want to do, you have to pass the ordinance.
Yeah, it's, it's different, it's a different kind of animal. Affordable housing is, that's, it's not like that at all.
Yeah, those ordinances are actually ordinances, those are zoning ordinances that you're going to be implementing, and so, there's a consistency with the master plan that's required, substantial consistency, not complete consistency, just as a road can get built or configured in a way that's not completely consistent with the master plan, but it's substantially consistent.
Right.
Particularly when you're asking for funding from some other agency. You're darn right, it's going to be substantially consistent.
It's going to be, yeah.
All right, so then, then before, let's say, once we say that these concepts have to be included in here, then this goes to the, to the council. Is that correct, or is the next stop the council, or we just, this is it? This is jurisdictional planning board?
This is guidance for capital, capital improvement projects and planning and further development of these ideas, this is the foundation.
Okay, okay.
You just lost me on that one. So, it's a plan?
Yes, it is.
It's a ministry.
Right, it means council has to do it?
No.
No, right, it's a plan that can still be...
Yeah.
Looked into by engineers.
Yeah.
Does this make sense?
Right.
So, it's...
I mean, ultimately, the...
It's where we want to go, but it's not written in stone, it can be changed.
Right, it's visionary. Ultimately, the council funds the design of streets, so ultimately, they have the last[1663.12] voice.
To get the money, we have to adopt this, to apply for grants.
For grants, yeah.
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 And, and we're all for them.
Yeah.
It's just a question like, we don't want to tie hands.
Right.
Do you want the flexibility going forward as you develop each of these individual components?
And I think we're with, on board with like 95% of them, there's just a couple here or there, we may need some future discussions, so...
And, and, and I think that the council will see that, well, as these projects come up, and you'll see, you'll be able to ask those same questions.
Right.
You know, because like you said, like, about the speed limit situation, if you, you know, right turn on red.
So I don't know if it's worthwhile listening or...
I don't know if it is.
No, I don't think it is. I, I think we already have some language in the plan about speed limit lowering on, especially the Biden boulevards.
But I think that also knowing that you're part of the planning board also, in the end, and you understand what we're concerned about.
Yes.
You know that this is not unusual. This is, like, these are the consistent things that we always bring up as a planning board. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, personally.
And all those items would be in the minutes as the...
That they will be.
May as have been noted disappear. Not from here.
All right, can I get a motion?
Do you want me to put any type of recommendations in this resolution? If not, that's fine, I'm just asking a question.
I think the only thing that should be part of the resolution is what we just said, it's a plan, it's conceptual, and it's not written...
No, that's not what you put in the master plan adoption resolution.
I don't know.
No, the master plan, it's, it's an element of the master plan, and it is what the law says it is. If you believe that there's enough flexibility and general terminology within the plan as it's now written to cover these points, such as reductions of speed limits and the like, and you can certainly adopt it in the format that it is, that's fine. I'm not saying it isn't, I'm saying that you can do that. And it sounds like these witnesses have told you that that information isn't...
But I would suggest maybe the, a couple of the comments that you read maybe are conditions of the resolution.
Like, what...
The green infrastructure part.
Right, the green infrastructure, the, what about the lighting, the consideration of lighting?
Yeah, you said, uh, speed limits.
Yes, speed limits, considering the speed limit reductions.
Bus widths, lighting.
Bus width, yes.
Green infrastructure, license plate recognition impact for parking.
And considering that, that it's network through towns, to, to consider that the best we can.
Working with the neighbors, yeah.
To network with other towns.
That is in here, the networking with the other town that is in here.
Okay, it's already in there, then don't, don't worry about that.
So I have green infrastructure, reduction of speed limits, no right turn on red?
Consider it, right, consider...
Yeah, these would be recommendations, recommendations of the general principles set forth.
Not to confuse matters, this is, the education program policy covers a lot, but I'm not sure if it totally covers the example that Trudy gave, which I thought was an amazing example, because of really highlighting that, as Ray Park is, like, pedestrian-friendly, like, at gateways. Because we talk about all, like, we talk about all the right audiences, except not really that audience. Like, you come to town, you, I've seen it other towns, you're like, when you come here, slow down, you know, something. I don't know how, if it has to be in there, or that's just for your knowledge, but...
No, I think it's a good res, uh, condition, that gateway, gateway treatments be considered for traffic calming, essentially.
You're talking about signage or...
Signage.
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 You can say treatments and signage.
Treatments and signage, there you go.
Be considered for what?
Gateways. Or, oh, traffic calming.
Gateway treatments be considered to...
Traffic calming.
Traffic...
Calming.
Anything else that anybody wants to consider?
I would just say something about the lighting.
The, the lighting, like, when they, when they are, they're, they're already working on the streets to be considering, you know, is there a way to upgrade the lighting also, if it need, it need bit?
Right.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the plan with the additions mentioned?
In the resolution, you want them in the resolution, not in the plan?
Right, in the resolution, okay.
In the resolution, yes. I second it.
No, Jeff, he's not, he's still...
Yes.
He's back in.
He's back in.
Rick.
Rick's back in.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
Councilwoman Eva Platon?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Trudy Syfak?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Barbara, who was the second one?
I was.
Barbara.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you. Gives us a great future towards the, for, for the city, thank you.
Well, that's hoping we hit the pick six.
What, for paying this, paying for it? All right, I don't know when you're, when you're ready, Jack, for the resolutions.
Yeah.
You lost your seat.
Um...
Oh.
Yeah. The first one...
The first one actually is Michael.
Is it yours?
Michael Sullivan.
Jennifer.
Affordable housing?
Oh, yes.
You did that, I'm sorry. I put you to the...
Yeah, the resolution.
Right here, got it?
It's Jennifer.
The only thing I didn't have on that, I sent it out with blanks, I don't, who made the motion and who seconded the motion at the very time of the meeting, I just have to consider.
For what, for affordable housing?
Yeah.
Oh, we'd have to do it on the minutes, the minutes probably would have that.
All right, so we can leave a blank, just fill it in, I left, I left the blanks for you.
Okay.
Eligible members, I can move the resolution, are... Everyone that's here.
Rick Lambert?
All of you are eligible.
Yep, everybody's eligible.
All right, this is for the affordable housing, right?
Right.
Okay.
I wasn't there.
Yes.
No, not Jim Henry. Sorry, Jim Henry wasn't there. Everyone else, sorry.
Read all the names. Jim's not here.
Sure.
Rick Lambert?
Who made the motion?
Nobody.
Nope, so you don't read the names until we come to the motion.
I think they did that. You can hear your voices.
Somebody want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution, for the affordable, just for the affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing resolution.
Who's second? Second.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eva Platon?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Trudy Syfak?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Trudy Syfak?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes, again. It's just that simple.
There you go. All right, Jack, the next one?
Uh, the compliance with the condition for that parking situation for 545 Lake.
545 Lake.
Yeah, it's a two-pager, it's a short one. Members who are eligible are Michael Manzella, Barbara Prizak, Maun, Rick and Jennifer.
A motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
Rick, Rick is first, Mike is second.
Want to read it?
Yeah, just read it.
Okay. Michael Manzella? Yes or no? Yes. Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Eva Platon?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Yes.
Arvar? 1112 to 1114 made this morning, I don't know if you have this, I was discussing with Donna, planner, and maybe, and the manner, scope, number six, originally had the proposed valet parking service shall use one parking space in front of the location for drop-off and pickup. I omitted valet, just called it the proposed parking service. Number nine, language help, sent to me from Donna, that the proposed facade lights, sconces shall be shielded, which I had originally, and the light emanating from the light shall not spill into the contiguous properties of the river. Basically the same thing I said, it's just a little bit different than saying. Number 10, the African ship applied with the landscape entry protection comments sent forth in the report for the project prepared by the board planned dated March 2019. Essentially says the same thing, but references the previous report. So, those were the only changes that were made from whatever I sent you previous. Everything else is the same.
Move it, that's changed.
Okay, let's make sure who...
Second.
Mike.
I'm pretty sure you both...
Yeah, both were there.
All right, you have more?
Uh-huh.
Okay, go ahead.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Eva Platon?
Yes.
John Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
And the next one would be the beer garden, the temporary uses and uses, and I believe I sent that out to you, the changes already.
Yes.
There's now seven in number, reducing down. Arvar, you have that one?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
John Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Well, 527 is, is actually, they came for DRC today?
Yes.
All right, so they're, they're going to be coming back again.
Okay, yeah, that was the one I wrote to me and said it may not go to that, so I put it in.
But I don't think that it affects the resolution.
Doesn't affect the resolution.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, we can adopt the resolution, it's just like fine-tuning colors.
Well, well, the way, the way it was approved, it was approved, and that the DRC is actually doing compliance with the resolution. That's really that.
So, so we can move forward with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we're right.
You have that one, Arvar?
Yes.
I have the motion second.
We'll adopt the resolution.
Second.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauer?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Eva Platon?
Yes.
Those all the resolutions?
57 banks.
547 banks.
Yep, that was the last, that was the one we just did.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that one, I did do, but not the revision. Yes, I put a revision. Number 16, I, at the end of the first line, first line of rate, the exterior cladding of the new upper floors of the building shall be a warm sun.
Right. That, that's what we're trying to get, get through right now.
And I also changed HVAC, HVAC at the renovation, so that's the one we're using.
Yep. Just as yours.
Now, and I, I have the three contracts that are exactly the same from last year, for planner, for engineering, myself. I, I don't know that we actually, we adopted a resolution, we never memorialized the written resolutions acknowledging the adoption. So, contracts are fine, I gave two sets for people to sign, keep one set with the board, and the resolutions, you can either, if you want to adopt them now, or you want to take a look at them, adopt them next meeting, they're just, we did last year, basically updated. So, we can do it the next meeting, doesn't matter.
I mean, do you have it for all of the professionals that we...
I have it for the three of us.
For all, for, for everybody in the contingent ones?
No.
The ones that have...
Contingent ones, because there's no formal action to take on them just yet, until we decide what you can do.
What do you mean? No, no, the, these are, I'm, I'm sorry, the ones, the ones that have the conflict, the conflict ones, do you have those too? For the conflict attorney, conflict planner? So why don't we do it when we have all those?
Okay.
Okay? Because, so then we can do them all at the same time?
Yeah, thanks for the reminder.
Okay?
But I'll leave them with you, if anybody wants to read them, you have them, and I'll do it for the other...
Yeah, for the next one. That'd be great.
Sorry about that.
No problem. I second. You slipped that one in, didn't you?
I mean, I can, I can say.
That's right. I know, right? Okay.
So who's going to win the basketball championship? Okay, because, right.
But I tried to look at the score and I...
But you told me who's going to win the football championship.
I know.
You're going to believe me tonight?